Like when I grew up, you didn't have parties. I might have had a cupcakes with a couple of my friends at the school one day. And what, when, when is Peyton's birthday gonna be?
What?
What day is Peyton's on, gonna be on?
I'm on a time, I'm on June for April 2nd.
That is Saturday?
Yeah. I already told you. I just told you. God awful. Don't talk that. Do that again. Don't correct me what you just did was. I think we're, what did, what did he do was? Oh, we get shot with blasters.
Buddy was doing the tuck to the hand.
What were you saying? Uh, April 2nd, sorry.
No, no, it's just, that's a Saturday, right?
Yes.
Oh, you know the wood box I put the wood in at the fireplace? Ask Joe if he'd like that for his garage to put wood in. Otherwise they'll just burn it.
Do you, you don't?
I can show him what it is.
Want this for a what?
Hang on. How do you flip this? Does it flip up?
Pause.
How do you flip it?
Uh.
Oh, it's way down here on the, why do they change them? There you go.
Right there. Down?
Down, okay. Alrighty.
I got travel.
Want to delete my band?
I am very nice. Are those one that I had?
What? Uh, no. Those are in name. DC ones?
Yeah. Okay, Saturday. So, in order to search where were my wild days, where's your port on? So, I got a search. It was coming from search. I tracked it. It made it to someplace in Jersey. And that was down the Jacksonville floor. From the distribution center in church. It went to Florida.
Where, uh, who'd you wear it from?
It led to Texas, so it's not.
Oh, it's not.
But is that not the straightest track?
Yeah.
So now I don't have this shirt.
You're dead when you don't need it.
Correct. I have plenty of shirts before I, I got. Cause I buy like that so many clothes.
Grampy is too. Peyton, go to sleep. Wake up!
Peyton, it's warming up.
Yeah. Uh, I bet you that, yeah. I'm sure that's true. How's your soup? Is it good? Who's going? Thank you. There you go.
Benny, Benny's a good boy.
Benny's a good boy.
Somebody was trying to get into my Apple ID.
Yeah, you sure? That could, that, them telling you that.
Yeah.
Just like somebody's trying to get into my Facebook account.
Yeah.
I keep getting an email that somebody's trying to get into my Facebook account. The lock with that. I should, I should send them an, an email saying, let me know if you get in. She said somebody's trying to get into her Apple ID.
And they locked it for security reasons.
They locked it? Who says that? The email?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't believe that.
I'm not, right.
Because they, what they want you is contact, is contact them and then you give them information.
And I'm not giving them.
No, don't do that. Well, dude, on that time, you don't want to do that. It's fake.
So these comments, you want me to post? You got caught the other day, yeah.
Oh. What did I comment on?
Uh, I don't know where, like, you wrote the beach.
Oh, yes, I did. I remember saying the beach.
Yeah. With every other, other person, obviously won't be able to stop commenting on those. We already know that.
Especially right now, right?
Ever, the head, you want Michael or you get the head?
Uh, all three.
She's spitting that first. You didn't like those noodles, huh? You should just, you should have her eat in the tub. Be like grandma. There's a solid garbage disposal. With all this stuff about Ukraine, I keep thinking back to that uh, Seinfeld episode with Kramer and uh, Newman playing, uh, was it Clue? No. What was the game they were playing?
I think it was Clue, I think.
Risk. Ukraine is weak. Ukraine is not weak. No, probably can't.
Hey Megan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Um, wanted to make sure that, have you had a chance to review my submission? Did it meet, did it meet muster?
For the town report?
Yeah.
I have to admit, it isn't a folder.
Okay, fine. That's fine.
Don't share that around too much because I make my deadlines strict and then I.
This, this is being recorded, you know.
Uh-oh. Um, no David, I, I apologize. I started.
No, don't worry. No, I wasn't asking it for that reason. I was just just wanting to know that it passed muster.
Oh, no, it's, I'm sure it's great. I will, um, I will confirm it and then I have to start assembling everything, but.
We were, uh, we were down at Providence again Saturday for the basketball game where they, they won the Big East for the first time.
Yes, you were there. How cool.
Oh, yeah. It was, it was amazing. Oh, the whole night was just like electric and.
So, your other daughter's going, right? I mean, this is the.
She, well, she, as I said, as I think I've told you, this is getting her closer and closer to saying what she wants to, but she's not there yet, so.
My, so my nephew's at Villanova and my brother and his whole family, they're going to New York for the game this weekend, I think.
They're playing, they're playing right now.
Oh, yeah. Okay. That's exciting. Yeah, I don't know if they're there right now. I don't, I know they're going. You can't, I haven't kept up with it totally.
But it was, it was amazing.
That's so fun.
The kids charged the court. And it was just, it was so loud. It was just, everything was just amazing with the whole thing. It was senior night so that, you know, they had, they started off with that and then the whole, the whole place was just outrageous.
I love it.
That must have been a, a nice experience.
Yeah, until the kids started throwing the beer on the court with about a minute to play.
Then you gotta go. Then it's time to, all the dads gotta go home.
No, not this dad. He stayed.
And he grabbed the mop.
No, I did not. I was too far up to grab a mop.
Now Greg is smoking again.
Not, not again. I was too, I'm too square for any of that stuff anyways. Uh, no.
Just got my new air, air cleaner system in, put in down here where I'm living.
Nice.
Where I can smoke cigars down here.
Oh, man, I'm coming over. I'm coming over.
I like, I'm not going outside to smoke a cigar.
Why? It's, it's warm outside.
So what does it do? Suck it in and then push it out?
Yeah, it, um, it senses odors, smoke, everything else, and it turns itself on and off anytime there's anything in the air. And it gives you a, um, it gives you an air, a clean air reading, like every, every half hour, it tells you what your air quality is, what's in the air.
Wow, it's a true man cave, huh?
Excellent.
Like kitchen now.
All right, it's seven o'clock. We have a forum, so as a preliminary matter, I'm gonna begin the script. As a preliminary matter, this is David Gavin, Chair of the Managed Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. Can you hear me? Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Krista Silva?
Yes.
Armin de Guerbe Kirian?
Yes.
Justine St. John?
Yes.
Jeff Swanberg?
Yes.
My staff, Greg?
Yes.
And Megan?
Yes.
And Justin?
Yeah, David.
Okay, Becky, can you hear me? Okay, great. All right, um. Good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted via Zoom. Everyone on the agenda will be participating remotely. And we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. We would like to hear comments, public comments, and if there are, is further action that's required by us, I'll add it to the, the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, if we're able, within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note, this is, uh, the Zoom is being allowed, participated or being provided as a public service. The meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless it's otherwise required by law. The agenda was posted on the town's website and it identifies how the public may join us. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that everyone is participating by video conference, therefore be aware that other people may be able to see anything that is on your screen and be sure that you don't screen share your computer as anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Everything for this meeting, all the materials for this meeting was, um, provided to us on board docs and provided to the public available by board docs. And I would recommend members of the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I otherwise know. Turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll go down the line of the members, inviting everyone by a name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking and please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I hear the, yield the floor to you and please state your name and address before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through me, taking sure to identify yourself. You don't ever have any public, uh, sessions tonight. Everything is open for comments from public as appropriate, but we don't have any actual public hearings. So we can move on to the first item on the agenda, which is public comments. I see that Mr. Stone has his electronic hand raised. Sir, please go ahead. Identify yourself. Name, home, address, please.
Good evening. Kevin Stone, Seventeen Rice Road. And, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Go right ahead.
All right. So, good evening. So the select board has a history of pretending challenges don't exist and letting these challenges fester until they blow up to catastrophes. My family lived this firsthand as this, as this select board financially neglected the green metal roof until it exposed my child to mold and asbestos and was one bad snowstorm away from a roof collapse with potentially deadly consequences. I am distraught now to see not all, but many members repeating the, the same behavior and pretending that our out-of-district education costs are not spiraling out of control. Our out-of-district percentages are twice the state average and growing. When parents have multiple legally mandated options that can force the town to sufficiently fund their child's education, adequate education spending is no longer discretionary but required. One way or another, sooner or later, we will have to pay this bill. I am just also distraught to see members with seven percent year-over-year inflation and pending staff negotiations pretend that the proposed budget is anything but a cut that will drive parents to their out-of-district options and wind up costing us more than had we just adequately, adequately funded the schools in the first place. Finally, I am distraught to see members pretend that citizens of this town don't even want to have a discussion of Proposition Two and a Half. Proposition Two and a Half specifies that after the select board votes, it goes to the town, to a town election, of which citizens will have their say. If citizens disagree with Proposition Two and a Half, they can vote for it. So, but with certain members' statements saying that they don't believe the town, uh, that the town will vote for it, that is precluding these options. I believe that citizens should have a say and that the select board should opt to vote for Proposition Two and a Half and put the decision before the voters. Thank you for your time and good evening.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I don't see any. Kevin, if you can lower your hand unless you have another comment, so I don't get confused. Thanks.
There you go.
No problem. I don't see any other public comments. Please yell out if, if you're want to speak and you can't get your hand up or whatever.
I, I just have a question for the chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so you, you mentioned public comments. Is this meaning, are we able to comment on each item individually as we go along or is that, was that public comment session the only?
No, you can, it, there's an opportunity when warranted to speak. If you have a comment on a, on a, on item, feel free to speak up. We're trying to be as open as possible. So, yes, feel free, okay?
I will, I will certainly raise my hand.
And actually, it's probably better if an item's on the agenda to wait until that time so that it sort of flows better, uh, on any given night, all right? Thanks.
No problem.
And if I violate that, Kevin, please just yell at me, okay? And we will make sure you get to speak. All right, um. Next item is Town Administrator Report. Everybody had an opportunity to see Greg's report. And, um, Greg, go ahead and go over the highlights and everybody, if anybody has any questions or comments.
Absolutely. Good evening. Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. A couple of the highlights I do want to. Okay, a couple of the highlights, uh, and this is all in the report, which I always encourage the public to read online, both on board docs as well as on the town's website. I've, I've directed that masks will be continued to war, to be worn in town offices through March 31st. Remote meetings will be continued to be required through March 31st. This Friday is what I'm, an event I'm really looking forward to over at the Richard Street TPW Garage for the town to, um, sort of publicly appreciate, uh, State Representative Hogan and, and her, uh, hard work on behalf of the town, um, uh, to sort of um, commemorate an earmark that she was able to secure. Um, uh, to sort of commemorate an earmark that she was able to secure through the state's ARPA bill. Um, so that's at eleven AM on Friday, this Friday, the fourth, at the Winter Street TPW Garage. And, and the invitation and the agenda are in the, are in the, um, board docs in case the public is curious. I also want to commend, uh, the good work of the staff, in particular, uh, in this case, uh, Public Works and Justin Marko, the Director. He was able to secure funds from a FEMA grant, uh, for a hazard mitigation plan that, that really supports the town. In general, hazard mitigation could range from flooding to, um, well, I just a range of topics, but, but it is sort of in, in alignment similarly to our municipal vulnerability program and our, and our actions towards that end. So I appreciate the hard work you did in securing that grant. Um, also wanna highlight Stephanie Duggan, the HR manager for the town. She was able to get a scholarship so that, so that she could go, um, to the MMA Suffolk Municipal Finance Seminar, which is pretty cool. We have a couple of employees that have been able to do it, but it's, it's helpful that the HR um, position also has a good grasp on municipal finances. She helps, uh, with contract negotiations, et cetera. And that is all for the, for the main TA report, but as, as you guys can see from my agenda, there's a couple of the topics I wanna touch on. But if there's any questions on what I just covered or anything else in like the proper report, I'll take those.
Board members, any questions?
Are you gonna finish the report or you want us to make a comment on it?
On his, done with his report. He's now gonna move on to the other items. He just asked if there were questions on the report itself.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda interested because I, I like to, uh, know whether or not, um, in the past, have you guys used the Myers-Briggs? Because that sounds like, uh, it's a great exercise. Is that something that you've done in the past? Are you aware of that?
So, thank, one, thank you for reading it that far down in the TA report. That's great. Not that I'm sure all of you don't read all seven pages, I'm sure every time, but I appreciate.
I like reading it, just so you know.
So, thank you, and I appreciate that because, uh, the staff does, will do a lot of work. So that was very clever. So, I don't know, in my, in my well, now three and a half years, we have not done the Myers-Briggs, uh, test report, you know, that sort of approach to leadership and, and, um, um, analysis, diagnostic, if you will, on, on personalities. I, I have taken the, uh, Myers-Briggs test in the past. But even if people have taken it, I'm just curious to see what has changed. You know, like sometimes, you know, over, over a certain amount of experience you've had in life, anybody, it's good to sort of, uh, I don't know, reset and touch base and see where you are in your perception of things and your approach to leadership and, and your personality. That's really what it is, of course. It's your personality.
I think, I think it's a great exercise. Is that something that you'll be able to share with us, or is that something that you guys are gonna just kind of keep it amongst yourselves?
Probably keep it amongst ourselves. I don't know if my staff is, is thrilled about publicly announcing where they fall in. But, uh, but good question. Thank you for asking about that.
Yeah, not, not a problem. And that, the, the other thing is, this is just a kidding thing, by the way. I, I like that idea that you guys are gonna have these Adirondack chairs.
Yeah.
Relaxing. So is that something that Chris and I could go smoke a cigar there, or how is that gonna work?
Wait, so, so they'll, so they'll, the, I, the intention is to have it along the river. I, I.
I know, yeah, yeah.
But.
But that's cool. That's very nice.
I think it is cool. Yeah, yeah. I, I don't know. I, I, I welcome. I mean, I, I think it's cool that we have access to the river behind Town Hall, and I, and I don't see a lot of people going back there, so I think it's, it's nice. It's the idea is to get.
It, it's a beautiful spot, so that's, I, I commend you guys for taking that opportunity and, and creating a little relaxing place for, for the staff.
It was, you know, it's all Stephanie, and what she, she did a survey of employees to see what kind of, what, what kind of items I might be interested in, health wellness in general, and getting some outdoor time is.
Yeah, very nice, very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's all I got. I like, like I said, I always enjoy reading a report.
Thank you.
I'll just say congratulations to Justine.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, what did she do? What did you do, Justine?
No, in, in the TA report, the.
Oh.
Dispatcher.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Uh, any other questions? Any other questions? Go ahead, Greg, then go on to, um, the hybrid meetings. You, I think you might have already discussed that.
Yeah, to a degree. I just wanna point out that, that, you know, as, as I said, the, the, um, I've directed that the town will continue with the remote meetings through, uh, March thirty-first, but after that, um, I'm not sure, but you know, it could be an option as to what sort of approach different bodies, committees want to do. Um, you know, but I'm always looking for feedback, particularly from this body, of course, the select board. If you have preferences either way, maybe you haven't thought about it now, but um, if you have any guidance or direction you wanna give me and, or the rest of the boards, or where, where you want, or maybe you have some questions about it. Um, come April first, you know, I, no, no determinis, determination has been made about um, what the policy will be for how to hold remote meeting, or how to hold re-meetings, whether they be remote, in-person, or hybrid. And I think we've been successful about some bodies, the select board comes to mind, of course, about the hybrid meeting. Um, but the, the recent, uh, bill that was approved, the governor is allowing for uh, remote meetings through July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Maybe that would be extended indefinitely. I don't know, but for now, it's, it's through July fifteenth. Um, so you have any, is, is the board having questions on that?
The hybrid meetings might be difficult for those who, and I don't know what the technological challenges are that, that arise, but, uh, I know the planning board downstairs, downstairs in the, um, um, the, uh, Sue Campbell Room, I know that they were able to complete, um, some meetings that were sort of hybrid, where you could see them and watch online at the same time, and they were there. Our bill, our, uh, room, we can do that in, but some of the places where some of those other committees meet might propose, pose challenges.
That's right.
Um, so I think that's something for each committee out there that needs to start thinking about what they want to do and how they would be able to accomplish it, because I don't know if everybody has the capability of being able to achieve uh, what we and the planning board were able to do.
That's right. I think the library might have some capabilities, but don't quote me on that, because it's been a while since we were able to even do the hybrid. So, um, if any boards or committees are interested in doing it, they can reach out to my office and we can see what's, what's capable. If nothing else, just to reserve the certain resources necessary well ahead of time.
Yeah, perhaps we can send a general email out to chairs just saying, hey, be aware so that their committees can talk about it and they can, they can reach out to you if they have any questions.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Because FinCom has an opportunity to use it because they are, and they typically use our room, so, um, they would be able to accomplish it, assuming all the other technological issues apply too, that they have, if they have to have somebody there. I don't know. I don't know what the, what the guidelines are.
Yep, very good.
All right, you, you're, go ahead.
No, no, it's all good. So, uh, the next topic is the tribe board meeting that was proposed for, um, well, I, I caught that it was proposed for March twenty-second, but I, before I kind of moved forward with any of that planning, just like anyone else, I just wanted to check with the five of you, uh, the board members, if you have any um, questions about that, or is anyone not available for the twenty-second? Is that not a good date? Do you have any questions about whatever that is? And, and I just wanted this to be an opportunity to talk about that.
No, as of right now, for me, it's, it's available. Um, the question is that we have a, an agenda that is developed, that is, uh, you know, beneficial for us all to have a conversation that makes sense. That would be my, that would be my only comment. Everybody else available?
Yep, the twenty-second, yeah.
Twenty.
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
All right, so we can have it on the calendar. Have it on the calendar, let the others know, and, uh,
Yeah.
As of right now, it's a go.
Right, presumably, if I, if I can craft, and maybe I'll work with Brian Hostu, and then, and then you and Hillary and Alana can, could review a draft agenda for it and whatnot, similar to, uh, other tribe boards, but I just wanna put it on the agenda, so there's an opportunity to talk. All right, and then, um, the really exciting stuff is the FY twenty-three budget development. So, uh, we have some good news. Um, we got a less-than-projected assessment than for ASABET of Vocational Regional School District, uh, which is great. Um, not only is it less than what I had projected in my town administrator recommended budget, but we also get a rebate, so to speak. So we get a reimbursement of about sixty-five thousand dollars um, because the, that vocational school happened to have, um, um, a, a, a higher, you know, certified surplus, which I would call.
That was the, that was that email we got a few weeks back that we
Yep.
We're sort of waiting to see how they would apply it.
Yeah, the committee hadn't approved it, so I didn't, I was reluctant to kind of make it public.
And they could have. I guess it's, it's nice. They could have just kept it and used it as free cash on their own end, or given it back to us. Is that true?
I don't know if that's true. I don't know what the rules are for their own, because it's not free cash. I just sort of relate it to free cash.
Okay.
I.
The email, the email after, when you described it, made it sound like it was, okay, guys, you have this extra money and you have to either give it back or use it somehow on an appropriate project. And it may be that they didn't have an appropriate project.
No, I don't, I, good question. So I, but either way, it, as it turns out, we're, we're able to get some money in return. Now, that all sounds very good and all, and as I've been saying publicly, if, if there was more funding, I suspected that, you know, we would try to fill in and try to meet some of the department's requests. However, uh, simultaneously, I, we got some less-than-great news about our contracts for, um, solid waste and recycling, which we'll, we'll pick up later in this agenda. Um, but I think that's where I'm gonna kind of do a quick shift over as my recommendation to how to use that money. But, but, um, that's not the end of the story for the budget, because, um, I just got my renewal for at, we just got the renewal for Maya Health, uh, which is our health, um, insurance, and that's one of our biggest expenses in the budgets. Um, and it was, it was less than, than what I had projected, uh, which is great. But, but I, I typically try to respect the process that we handle and that we approach the budget in town, which is through the budget subcommittee. And so next Wednesday, uh, the ninth is the next budget subcommittee meeting where I plan to present my recommendations on how to make those adjustments to my proposed budget, which is now the select board's budget. Um, so that'll be the next, and I, so I don't have it now, but when I, I'll be able to provide analysis of what that health insurance renewal is as well as how I recommend the, the town appropriates that much, that buddy, that money. And then, um, I still don't have the liability insurance. It's not, it's, that's not as, as sort of a scale compared to health insurance. It's not nearly as great, but I, I suspect I was hired than, my projection was higher than what it'll actually come out as, which is good. Um, all right, any questions on all that?
So you don't even wanna give a hint as to what the net is with, uh, with the, uh.
Yes, I can give a hint, because it's public document. Like if, uh, yes, I can, because I got an email, right? So it's, it's, so I, it's a public document. Um, I had projected a little less than six percent increase before, um, and not, not only wasn't really my projection. That's the information I was given from Maya and our health consultant. Um, but the renewal that we got the other day was for three and a half percent, which is great. Now, I, as we've done in the past, my recommendation is not to budget just to that level, because you wanna be able to, you wanna be able to give yourself a little bit for new hires, which is expected. Um, and any sort of fluctuation in the market, which is always expected. Um, and we've, that's been a pretty good approach in the past, so that's probably what my recommendation would be, but that should still give us a little bit.
What's the, what's the dollar amount, do you know?
The, I, that I don't wanna quote, because I.
All right, that, that's what I was getting at. Okay.
Yeah, it's not nothing, but, um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna kind of like, uh, tip my hand and then be wrong later. So, I, um, but I, I do have a spreadsheet going and I'll, I'll provide that analysis, uh, to this. It will come back to the select board, but you know, like typically, we go through the budget subcommittee before we come back to select board. And then, um, uh, yeah, it's great. So that, I wanna be able to tell you, I'm excited about it. I think it's good news and, and we'll have some, you know, some money to, you know, to go around.
Right. Or not. Question, I think, yeah. I, I'm sure we'll find a place to put it.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, any other questions from the board members? All right, uh, item number three is the acceptance of minutes. We've got three sets of minutes to accept, and I will, uh, take a motion on them. One at a time, if we want.
Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of February twelfth, twenty twenty-two, as shown and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes of February twelfth? Hearing none will vote, and by roll call. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Second set of minutes.
All right, uh, move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, as shown and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Uh, goes to Justine. She was louder, and, uh, any comments or questions? Don't hear any, so we'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Last set is February twenty-second.
Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, as shown, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Great. Item number four is correspondence, or correspondence says, as it says on the agenda. A through E. Is there a motion to accept correspondence?
To accept and approve correspondences A through E as shown.
Second.
Uh, okay, any questions on it? I do, I did see, and I meant to raise this issue the last meeting, uh, or maybe the meeting before that, about the scholarship, which I'm assuming is the regular selectman annual scholarship. Um, I guess we can bring, if, if we wish to participate, which I think we traditionally have done, we bring, uh, our donation over to Becky. She'll tabulate and it will go off to the school. Becky, do you have a deadline on that?
Anytime in March, if you can get me the amount, um, and we turn it into the treasurer collector's office. It filters in through there. So if you make checks out to the town of Maynard, you just put on the bottom line scholarship.
Yep, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have to vote on that.
I, one, one comment, David, on
Yes, Jeff.
Testing, um, in relation to the, like, gas explosion. Can we get that notice out to the residents uh, in the immediate area, just to make sure that they, they see that?
Yes, correct. Yeah, I was nodding my head. Yes, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Um, so we'll vote on acceptance of the correspondence. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I am a yes as well. Consent agenda has two items on it. One is, uh, the re, re, re-emergence, I guess, of Earth Day for at least our celebration of Earth Day here in Maynard, uh, for Saturday, April twenty-third. Second item is for the Relay Car Parade, uh, for, I think that's for the, um, for the cancer walk thing, um, that, that they do annually as well, that we've done, that they've done that now two years in a row, I think, and this will be the third, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so that would be Friday, June third. Any questions on the consent agenda? Otherwise, we can take a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda, item A and B, as shown, authorizing use of digital signature for proof.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Would the route for the Relay Car Parade be the same as it has been? And if so, has the chief been briefed on that, just to make sure? Yep, okay.
Yes.
All right. So, um, any other questions or comments?
The only other question I had, uh, I just had one question, David, about, um, about the Earth Day, uh, celebration. I know that sometimes that runs up against the, um, the Little League Parade, but I think the timing is off on that, right? That's not the same day?
Yeah, it's a Saturday. This is on a Saturday. That is on a Sunday.
Twenty-four, that's the other one.
All right, just wanna make sure. Thanks.
All right, any other questions?
No, but thank you to both groups for putting these together.
All right, we'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right, the next topic we have a guest for, I believe, is the MBTA Communities Compliance Discussion, which I'm interested in hearing a little bit about. Um, and hearing how it affects us in the long term and, uh, et cetera. So I know that you were, who's here from the MBTA, uh, community?
We don't have anyone from MBTA.
I think if there was someone there.
From the, uh, compliance, um, hold on. Who is here for us?
So.
Elizabeth.
Liz, like, Liz Leiden?
Yes.
Okay, so she's, she is with our town council, BeTaller Mancasta. Uh, she, she was, uh, voluntold, I guess, to, to help us out with this. Um, but, but Bill Nenser has, and, and Megan Samudo have both been, uh, you know, greatly involved, or, or sort of like abreast of this. I'm only, I'm taking credit just to intro- introduce him. So Liz, Liz is who's helping us out through this.
Okay, welcome, Liz. And, and when I, when I was reviewing the agenda, I thought that it was going to be somebody from the MBTA with the, uh, presentation. the MBTA with the presentation. I'm not disappointed. But welcome. And I know you were you were told to five minutes is all we're looking for, but whatever you can give it to us, we're looking for as much information as possible. And especially if we have questions, that's most important. And how this will affect us down the road. And and Bill is here to answer some questions from the zoning side, too, I would suspect. So take it away.
Okay, can I share my screen?
Absolutely, assuming Megan gives you the authority.
Yes.
Right. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Right. Let's see how to okay. So as you are now aware, I am Liz Leiden. I'm with Mead Teller-McCosta and I'm going to be presenting the MBTA guidelines for you. So I haven't. I'm just going to go over a brief agenda. We have the introduction and purpose, the timeline. Maynard as an MBTA communities, the summary of the guidelines, what the requirements are for the town and the effect of non-compliance. So under the act we it requires MBTA communities to have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as a right. And there are other criteria set forth in the guidelines as well. The purpose of the act is to encourage MBTA communities to adopt zoning districts where multifamily zoning is permitted as a right. So we have some deadlines that Maynard will be required to meet. The first is just a public comment period, which is going on now to solicit feedback on the draft guidelines. And if the town chooses to comment, they have until March thirty first to do so. An MBTA community must take the following actions by um the end of the day on May second, twenty twenty two. And the first is to include a presentation of the draft guidelines in a meeting of the Select Board. So this presentation would meet that requirement. So you can check that off your list. The second is to complete and submit the MBTA community information form. And I've included a link there so everyone has it. And the third is if you are contacted by DHCD to update your GIS parcel maps, then you would have to do so by January first. But they will let you know if if you're one of the communities that needs to do that. So Maynard as an MBTA community is an adjacent community, which means that there is no transit station within its borders or within a half mile of its border. And the minimum multifamily district district unit capacity, according to the calculations that they provide is seven hundred and fifty. And so that means that you have to have seven hundred and fifty units of capacity available in the district that you create or designate. And so here's just the statute as a whole. Um you don't have to read that, but I'm going to break it down for you so that you can understand each part. So the first is a reasonable size. And so in the guidelines, they define that as relative to the municipality. Um it's reasonable for that municipality. And DHCD will take into consideration the area of the district and the district's capacity. And multifamily districts should not be a single development site, but they must comprise of at least fifty acres and or approximately a tenth of the land within a half mile of a transit station. And since you don't have one in the community, it would just be fifty acres. And for an overlay district to comply, at least one portion of the overlay must include at least twenty five contiguous acres. That means one span. It can't be broken up into different parcels. And no portion that is less than five acres will kind of count towards the minimum requirement. So multifamily districts should be in areas that have safe and convenient access to transit stations for pedestrians and bicyclists and walkable if to the extent feasible. So the next part of the statute is minimum unit capacity. And so what that means is that the municipality must provide an accurate assessment of the number of multifamily housing units that can be developed as a right within the district. And that's referred to as the unit capacity. And it has to be equal to or greater than the number that I specified earlier. So seven hundred and fifty based on that calculation. And the estimate, you have to estimate how many parcels, how many units could be constructed on each developable parcel within the district. And you have to take into consideration height and lot coverage limitations, maximum floor area ratio, setback requirements, parking space requirements, and any other restrictions or limitations, including wetlands or sewer capacity. And the unit capacity is not a mandate to construct that number of units. It's just a and it's not a target. It's just a requirement that it has to be capable of supporting that development. As a right means without the need to obtain any discretionary permit or approval. So this means that you can require site plan review. You just can't make conditions on a project that would make the project infeasible or impractical. So the multifamily housing has to be without age restrictions and it shall be suitable for families. And what they've deemed to be suitable is as long as the zoning does not require multifamily uses to include units with age restrictions. And it doesn't place any limits or restrictions on the size of the units, the number of the bedrooms, size of the bedrooms or number of occupants, then it would comply. And for the purposes of the section, a district of reasonable size shall have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre. And then they establish additional limitations on that as well. But what this means is that the gross density of fifteen units per acre isn't just the individual parcels. It has to be for the total fifty acres, including rights of way and recreational civic, commercial conservation land, that kind of thing. And so what you can do to comply with that is create sub-districts where the capacity is greater in these sub-districts than other areas to meet that capacity requirement. Things that must be factored into the calculation include adequate water or wastewater infrastructure and areas that are not served by public sewer restrictions on Title V land rest uh title restrictions on the land itself, such as a conservation restriction or known physical limitations such as water bodies or wetlands. And it must be located not more than half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal or bus station if applicable. For Maynard, that would not apply as it's an adjacent community. So the district should, if feasible, be located in an area with reasonable access to a transit station based on street patterns, pedestrian connections, bus stops, that sort of thing, or it could meet the sustainable development principles such as locating the district near an existing downtown or village center, a bus stop or a location with underutilized facilities that can be redeveloped into new multifamily housing. So for the town of Maynard, um comments on the guidelines would be submitted by March thirty first. The presentation, which I'm giving to now, meets the requirement that it be done by May second. If you have to update your GIS parcels, those would be done by May second as well. Submit a determination of full compliance or proposed action plan by July first, twenty twenty three. So um you would just look at whether or not you have a district that already complies. And if you don't, you just have to say how what the plan is to for getting to compliance by July first. And then any new zoning would have to be adopted by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And after adoption, you have ninety days to submit a determination of compliance to DHCD. The effect of non-compliance right now is that um a failure to comply with the multifamily zoning requirements would make a community ineligible for funds from the Housing Choice Grants, local capital fund projects, Mass Works Infrastructure Program. And DHDCD has indicated that they may restrict other funding as well for failure to not comply. However, um I just want to say that this is still preliminary and the guidelines haven't been finalized yet. And so all of this is subject to change based on the comments that DHCD receives. And so let me see if I can figure out how to stop sharing.
Thank you. I I guess my first question is this seems like it's it's somewhat burdensome on a small community like ours with the size that we've got, et cetera. So given that, I guess my question goes to Bill Numzer as to with our current zoning as it is. How close are we to complying with what these requirements would place upon us? Given what we've got now. I mean, we're we're limited in what we can do. We can't just open up everything to multifamily housing. I'm all and then my secondary question uh is more for Liz and that the um I guess there's despite all of this, they didn't put in any requirements on affordability, which is somewhat interesting.
Right. I think the goal, I I think that's because of the purpose of the act is not to create affordable housing, but just to create more a a greener footprint, I guess, to
commuter friendly, if anything. I mean, that's what it seems to be.
They want to create more walkable areas and um access to transit and you know, that they encourage putting shops on the first floor and then building up and just reducing um carbon footprint, really.
Oh, comment on my com- my my comments relative to how close we are and what our zoning does for us now?
Yeah, uh well, first of all, David, I agree with you entirely. Um I think this is uh so far as comments, I'm trying to really be pragmatic with what we uh present. And and the plan is that we will collect comments, circulate. We've already begun. Circulate them and then we can all kind of add our two cents and but uh clearly um there are some things there that you know, are are going to be a problem for us. We identified them immediately. I mean, really, when it came out, we're like, what? And and because our position as a town is complying with the spirit of what they're trying to achieve here with the with the uh MBTA act. But how close are we? Well, we have two districts that are are certainly eligible and collectively, they probably will meet everything. We might have to make some tweaks. Um the first would be the downtown overlay district. Now, as it stands right now acreage wise, we would probably meet it. Now, Liz and I discussed this last week and and there were certainly hiccups um in that proposal. Nonetheless, uh if we don't meet the fifty acres, we're we make a good dent to that. And the second uh would be HCI, which is the mill. And the reason the mill would be a potential um qualifying site, and we have to do a lot more research on you know, because we don't know what changes are going to be coming with DHCD's feedback, but the mill potentially could fill a significant chunk of this as well. If you recall, there's a development agreement that the uh Select Board entered into with the uh mill probably well, I guess twenty maybe I don't know, maybe twenty thirteen, fourteen. And the gist of it is that up to fifty percent of the mill can become residential. However, the development agreement does specify that it must be one bedroom. Now, that right away knocks us out of the whole qualifying criteria that DHCD has. So that would be a development agreement that we have to amend if that's what everybody chose to go with. But it is a tool. So we have we have two tools in place that really I would feel confident making an argument with not an argument, but uh making our case with DHCD that we qualify now.
That's within the current that's within the current footprint of the mill um versus any additional you know, there's been all these rumors over ye- over the years about apartment complexes and everything else. So
Sure.
But that's that's exclusive that built strictly on what we've already got in place for our zoning at the mill as we speak right now, correct?
That's exactly right. And and that's important. This is a very important page, you know, a point that we have to make, as you you know, I mean, this is this is in the existing structures. So we want to be crystal clear. And and again, we're not a hundred percent done with the analysis. But we're not talking about something new in the HCI, the mill area. We're talking about existing structures. So please, let's, you know, we should all uh be clear about that. And secondly, and 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 critically, really, the biggest part of this uh legislation that is, I feel tough on us does infrastructure have to be in place to accommodate seven hundred and fifty units? You know, I mean, we are setting ourselves up, as this board knows, as the the boards and committees are watching this, we're trying to lay a groundwork to set ourselves up in such a fashion that our infrastructure can be ready to accommodate significant growth. We're trying to do it the right way, just like with our affordable. But we're not there now. And the mill could not accommodate the type of density that we're talking right now at the moment, nor could Powder Mill. And so that is a part of the legislation that I find like you know, chicken and egg type thing. Nonetheless, uh to to answer your question, I can't promise that we have everything. I think that we have a very strong case. Um and I love that um Liz scolded me earlier this week, or actually last week, that, you know, I'm we're trying to be uh really in front of this, but there she was she was careful to point out that, come on, changes will be coming. So don't necessarily, you know, you don't have to uh die on this hill yet.
But you think but you think changes in the legislation sort of an evolve of evolving of the legislation as communities begin to realize, wait a minute, that type of thing?
Yeah, I think as soon as they um issued the guidelines, they received a lot of feedback. And a lot of that feedback had to do with how do we calculate capacity based on infrastructure, especially um if the sewer capacity isn't there, how how do we meet that? And for smaller towns, it seems like the comments seem to be smaller towns are have a greater burden to bear for this because the unit capacity goes up to seven hundred and fifty regardless of whether that number is lower. And so I think the number is lower based on the number of units in a town. And so it doesn't make sense to just jump it up to seven fifty. It it should be four hundred and fifty seven or something like that. And so I think a lot of the um town councils, um I attended some meetings on this and a lot of town councils have similar comments that um the burden's too heavy for these smaller municipalities that can't come up with this kind of capacity. It would change the whole look and character of the the town. And so I think they're going to be receiving a lot of those comments and and hopefully they'll respond to them.
Members of the board, any questions?
Are we preparing our own comments back?
We
We
Yes.
Along the lines of what we just discussed, I assume, just I mean, I think a lot of this is, you know, it would be easier to apply to if we were just a larger physical community in terms of acreage and land area. So I would encourage you to draft the comments that, you know, small community. Um and note that a large portion of our land area is already occupied by a wildlife refuge and other items like that. That makes it more difficult for that kind of fifty acre target. Um and then the same arguments you've already made in terms of the number of units and the infrastructure required to support them. So
Yes, uh yes, I will um we're the plan is to distribute the comments. We'll we'll do we'll compile them from the boards and committees, maybe circulate them around once or twice, get them in so we meet the deadline. Okay, meeting the deadline doesn't mean that this is necessarily going to be law or anything like that. It means that they're going to draft the regulations based on that. So we'll be in compliance for a while because the 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 concern to me was that we I don't want to lose any leverage for Maynard because for, you know, deciding whether we qualify or not uh for from DHC. On the other hand, we get what they're doing and we're and we understand it and we're you know, some communities, honestly. You know, some communities, honestly, this is, this was on a, we had a workshop last week with. All our magic committees, some have just said, forget it. We don't need the grants. We're not doing it. And that's the end of it. And, and that's, that's the truth. And. So it's, I think that does two things. First of all, it says that, you know, all right, well. That means that there's more potential for.
More money.
Exactly, exactly. Now that's, well, being greedy for us, that's what my job is. But anyway, yes, Jeff, that is, that is the plan. And I will ensure that there is a circulation of the comments. It will probably be guessing. It'll be probably have to have a quick turnaround, you know, it'll be.
So I think we should include partners at the schools. Because there could be some comments that they have relative to the student impact. That such, you know, who knows how many actual residents would come in with, with children. But any child that increases the number of kids going to our schools has an impact on the school department, so. And especially in a small community like us with one district with, you know, four hundred, five hundred. A hundred kids per class year, it can be significant. So at least a comment, at least a comment from the schools is important.
It will be absolutely. And we will, one thing that will be critical when we respond. Is that we document exactly where, what we have, you know. So if we, you know, are, whether, it doesn't matter what kind of infrastructure it is. But whatever capacity is, we want to make sure that we, here's what we have, here's why it's a problem, help.
Yep. Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so Bill, if, understanding that we intend to have the questions that anyone on the board or the school committee or other town bodies have. And, and we got the questions, you're going to go through you, right, in the public comment period? Is, is the public comment period also open to anybody else, any, any, anyone that's not a member of a board? Or, you know, regular, you know, town citizen or citizen of any other community?
Yeah, sure.
It's open to anybody that wants to comment.
It absolutely is, but I, you know, I can't, you know, we have to kind of. We'll put it out there and we have to get what feedback we get. And hope that, you know, as many people want to respond. Now, that doesn't mean, now remember, these are not questions. These are comments and, and supposed to be designed to forward. Or to advance whatever position we're making. So, you know, we want to make sure we are to, we are right on and we can back up an awful lot of stuff. So we just want to scrutinize what we eventually do submit to DHC. Because the last thing we want to do is send some, you know, something up there where one little part of it is like, whoa, wait a minute. This isn't, you know, we want to make sure we're right on. But anybody can email OMS at town of Maynard over the next month. OMS at town of Maynard and I can assure you that we will review all the comments. And all your boards and committees also will be notified and have an opportunity to comment. It will be a quick turnaround. That's the only other thing. It's not going to be like, well, you know, it'll probably be a weak turnaround or something like that. But I will do my best on that and make sure that everybody has an opportunity to contribute.
Justine or Armand, any comments?
No, I think, go ahead, go ahead, Justine, sorry.
I was gonna say, my only question is, but I think you've answered it, Bill, is that you're handling all the other requirements? This is all going through your office?
Yes, we've met, the, the other requirements such as, well, we're having our briefing now. But we also have, David had mentioned. Our GIS layers and, and that's already, but we're okay, we're fine there. It's not, this part isn't really a heavy lift, in my opinion. You know, Liz may feel differently, but I think this part's just kind of getting straight. What I looked at and what, what really got me jumping out in front of this. Was getting the letter of compliance from DHCD. And we, as you all know, between our housing production plan, between our inclusionary zoning, all this stuff. We are trying to do it and, and I want to ensure that we. Are recognized for that and, and, and to lump us in with some communities is not, it's just. It's not, I don't.
It's not fair. It's not fair.
Well, all right, you said, yeah, it is.
I get it and I totally agree.
Because we, it'd be different if we're saying like, we don't care about, you know, our affordable housing, we're not.
Yeah, we're working on every single one of these things, really.
Every single one, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but I just think to your point, Bill, those are all the things that need to be, you know, explained in the, in your responses. Yeah, so that, so they could understand where we're coming from as a town, as a small municipality. And what, when what we're doing to stay ahead of, you know, of other towns to some degree.
Yes.
I see that Kevin Stone has his hand raised. Kevin, go right ahead.
Yeah, so I'll be really quick. I get the sense that we want, that the board wants to argue that this is unreasonable. I would actually suggest a different tack. I recall at the February fifteenth meeting, Gavin, you mentioned, you know, is there any way, you know, that we could apply political pressure? To get the water supply at Old Marlboro Road developed? And this requirement looks like a fantastic opportunity to get Old Marlboro Road expedited. Through the Department of Environmental Protection.
Indeed.
Yeah, the, the more I look at the, it's the four seventy-four bump up to seven fifty that's not fit for, for the major key. So I think that's got to be the center point of, of the comments to say that, that's, that's the, it's, it's not that we don't want to do our fair share. It's that we're, we're being asked to do more than, than what a, a community twice our size would be asked to do.
Yes, we're also an MBTA community that is not within a half a mile of a, a connection. So let's not forget, I mean, that's almost, almost a mile.
All right. Thank you, Liz, for presenting. Thank you, Bill, for your comments. And things for us, I guess, stuff for us to think about as we move forward. And we'll see the comments that you present when it's time for them to go through.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next item is item number seven, the Boys and Girls Club of Aspid Valley, a request for CDBG funds. And Greg, are you going to take this or is Megan?
No, I, so we, we invited Annalisa Kemp. Oh, I'm going to get your last name wrong.
Annalisa Kemp.
Campania, yeah. Before we go to you, Annalisa.
Yeah.
Greg or Megan, can you sort of give us background on the CBDG funding? And how it gets from the, from the grant to these organizations? That, I mean, I, I know we got it to the, to, to the food bank. And we got it to OpenTable, some of it. How, how does that operation work? And I assume that this is all, this is what this money is meant for, not that it's pulling money from an area where we could use it for another source. Benefiting the, and I don't say this in a negative way, but benefiting the town directly, the municipality directly versus. The Boys and Girls Club peripherally. Follow what I'm saying. I'm not saying that negatively. I know it's not coming across sounding nice.
We can clarify. We understand. It is confusing and that's what Megan's probably about to.
Yeah, I can speak to it. So this is, this is, it is CDBG funds. But it is separate from the recent contributions that we've had to food, food pantries. And businesses and childcare providers. So this is an unrestricted CDBG account. And that's the Community Development Block Grant Program. That program has a few different national objectives. There's three. One is to benefit low and moderate income persons. Second is to aid in prevention or elimination of slum and, and blight. And the third is to meet, you know, certain urgent needs. And our, so this is an unrestricted fund. It's really unique because. We're not ever going to get more money in this particular account. And we were involved in a CDBG loan repair program a number of years ago. And so what happened was if an owner, if a homeowner sold their property before a certain amount of time. They had to pay this loan back. They received a loan.
I remember that, yeah.
So instead of that money going back to the CDBG, they allowed it to go back to the town.
And I remember that too, yeah.
Yeah, we've had this account for a number of years. And what we've tried to do is to make sure that any, you know, use of this money. Does align with the national objectives. So, you know, really, the only thing that we've used this for in the past are, is an annual contribution to the Boys and Girls Club. And we also used it for partial, partial funding of the construction access ramp. To Veterans Memorial Park because that was designated a blighted area in our, in Naylor Port a number of years, years ago. So that meant the objectives as well. So this money, you know, can't, like I said, it, it should be aligned with the CDBG national objectives. It is one, a one-time fund. This is the remaining balance that we have. And it had, there has been a tradition of contributing to the Boys and Girls Club in, in the past. I hope that answers your question.
It does. I, I was confused and then I thought it was a different block grant. That had been used elsewhere or that could be used elsewhere and not as you described, so thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it could be used elsewhere, like to be clear, you know, to clarify it. It has been used for different things.
It's, do we have anything on the radar screen right now for it to be used?
I, I don't have anything right now. I mean, we really have, you know, been pretty particular about the usage of this funds. You know, some other potential ideas would be to, you know, use it to apply for other grants in the future. Like sometimes you need some seed money for, for things before you apply for something else. So we've had it in the back pocket. As you know, this has been a stellar year for grants for the town of Maynard. We have just been getting a lot of grants, so I, I mean, we're trying to administer the ones we have. And so we haven't used this for future, for future efforts.
All right. Before I let Annalisa speak, does the board have any questions about the grant itself and how it got to be where it is? If none, Annalisa, tell us a little bit about what the Boys and Girls Club hopes to do with, with the grant money.
Okay, thank you, David. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me and I was delighted when I reached out to Megan to find out that there were funds available. And she, you know, invited me, the Boys and Girls Club, to apply for it. Basically, our request is to keep our annual fund, which is. Just for those of you who might not know, it's eighty dollars a year for a child to attend after school every day, five days a week throughout the whole year. And the way we're able to do that is we have to fundraise, grant, you know, apply for grants. But also we run programs and our summer program is our largest revenue stream. To subsidize our after-school program. So last year, it was our first time after, you know, reopening after being closed for almost, you know, for a year. We didn't raise our prices. We haven't raised our prices in four years. We are the lowest cost camp in the area. I mean, just as a, a basis of comparison, even Town Recs, like Stowe. I was just looking at their, their catalog this year. Camp Stowe is three hundred and twenty dollars a week for a full day, eight to four. Weekly price, three hundred and twenty, we charge, last year was a hundred and fifty-five. So we are substantially lower than at any group camps around here, including rec centers. And even other boys and girls clubs. Last year, like I said, we didn't raise prices. We thought people were hurting. We also had access to a PPP loan. We had ERC credits, you know, we had a lot of funding from the government, so we kept prices the same. This year, we're looking to raise them just slightly because when we actually closed our books for last summer, we saw that we broke even. So it wasn't enough to, you know, subsidize other, you know, the after-school program. So we're looking to this funding to help us. And of course, we give out a lot of financial aid, even at these low costs, these prices families can't pay. Or we set up payment plans for families. It also, you know, with inflation and the minimum wage going up, we're expecting a lot of increases as our expenses. And it just takes a lot to open for summer CPR training, background checks, insurance. And as all, all the items you can imagine. So we respectfully request funding from this grant and. We would be using it for scholarships and running our summer program. Are there any questions I can ask, answer?
Yep, go ahead. Have board members?
I had one question, Annalisa. I, I think from what I see. You know, what we have left in the account is the, is the sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and six cents. Are you, are you comfortable with the fact, because I know that we've given money obviously before to help? So are you comfortable with the fact that you're taking all of that money now and there won't be money next year? So I think that's my concern.
Well, I mean, we. Two years ago, the, the town gave us a, you know, a huge amount and that really saved us. We didn't ask last year only because we were closed and we were getting, I was getting so much funding through ARPA and, and other, you know, government. So yes, I'm aware that, you know, Megan mentioned, you could take it all now or you could piece it. I think we would like to take it all now unless there's a use for it for the, you know. If there's another use for it for the town, which I, doesn't sound that way. I mean, that's, that's between the board to decide. But yes, I, we are comfortable with it. We're seeing a lot of, like, our insurance is going through the roof. And there's a lot of safety just to be part of the National Boys and Girls Club. There's a lot of safety measures and, and layers of safety. That new requirements we have to meet and it costs money.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm sure that those costs won't go away next year either, so.
No, I know. I understand.
Yeah, thank you very much for all you do with the program. I just want to make sure that it's set up for success.
I understand, no.
Any other questions from the board?
And, and I'm gathering that this is going to be separate from the effort that you are putting in place for the playground, right? That's going to be, that's totally separate.
That's totally separate. We have, yeah. I could talk about that, but these funds would not be a part of that at all.
All right, thank you.
Annalisa, how many kids that go to the Boys and Girls Club come from out of town, out of Maynard, outside of Maynard?
For after-school, David, we have almost like ninety-eight percent are Maynard because of the proximity to the, you know, the school and the buses drop off the kids. Summer, we have a wider reach, obviously. Still the majority are from Maynard.
The reason I ask is, are other communities participating by donating money to you? Or is it just Maynard carrying the load for kids that often may not be? And sure, it might be a small percentage, but may not be Maynard children.
Right. No, I've also applied to, I applied to the Stowe Community Chest. And United Way of Acton, Boxborough, because we saw a big influx of children from Acton this, this summer. It was the second largest, I mean, much smaller than Maynard, but the second largest town represented. So no, we do go to other towns as well.
Good, yeah, good. Glad to hear that.
Yeah.
All right. No other questions from the board? We can have a motion if it's so warranted.
I'll move to approve.
Go ahead.
Sorry, move to approve the allocation of applicable Community Development Block Grant CDBG funds. To the Boys and Girls Club of Aspid Valley, the remaining funds of sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and six cents.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a S as well. Good luck for the upcoming summer, Annalisa.
Thank you and thank you from all of us at the club for your support. It's, it's really has been a life changer for us. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for all your work.
All right, item number eight on the agenda is Mass Wellspring. With the recreational marijuana license, change in location proposal. Greg and Megan, you can take it over. Do we have a guest here to speak for Mass Wellspring?
That was the idea. I want to speak on behalf of Mass Wellspring. So Olaf, are you on the line?
Yes.
Can you speak up? Am I, maybe just me, but I didn't.
It's muffled a bit.
Okay, sorry. Is this better?
That's better, yes.
Can you introduce yourself, Olaf, and, and then get in? Can you introduce yourself, Olaf, and, and then get in, get into what, what do you want to go for?
All right. So uh, it's, good evening, everyone. And uh, my name is Olaf Ingari and I'm with Mass Wellspring. And uh, thank you for having me on the agenda. So we would like to request permission to move our dispenser location from four-six Nathan Street to seventeen Nathan Street. And we're required to obtain approval from this board before we can proceed with the change of location request with the Cannabis Control Commission. And uh, uh, I'm not sure if I should uh jump straight into the security aspect of it or uh what do you guys prefer?
Go right ahead. Tell your story.
Wait, wait, hold on. So I do recommend, don't go too far into the weeds about security. That would negate the point. So how, how about just like an overview to give some confidence to the board? But without kind of revealing your security plans, that, that we could maybe do an executive session. If you, do you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, yeah. I was actually going to suggest that. So if you guys want to see, I'm happy to take you uh on a tour to show you uh a security behind-the-scenes uh setup. Uh, but we will comply with all the state-required regulations uh according to uh the nine thirty-five CMR five hundred uh regs, which uh regulates adult use uh retail and cultivation. Uh, we only do retail in Maynard. Um, we met with the Maynard Police Chief a few weeks ago and he approved our security plan. And basically uh the bottom line is that we will have the sufficient security measures in place to prevent theft and unauthorized access. Uh, also ensure the safety of our employees and consumers and the general public. Um, so the highlights of our main security focus uh is basically prevent anyone who is not twenty-one to enter our facility. Uh, we'll uh secure all entrances, uh exits uh to prevent unauthorized access. And we will also establish limited access area to distinguish the areas where the employees and where the public can be located inside the facility. And all products will be set, stored in the, in a safe uh location. These are old, uh, uh, the old Middlesex Savings Bank building and it's definitely more secure than our current location. Um, we will have perimeter alarm on all exit uh entrances and exits and all the windows. Um, we will have panic alarm, hold-up alarm uh if we have uh an issue. Um, all the areas will be uh covered on, on the video surveillance. And we also need to store that for uh many months, actually, according to the regs. And I'm not sure if you, I, I don't see the screen, uh, so I'm not sure if you uh see the, the floor plan that we submitted.
No, we're not seeing that now.
So I'm not sure if Megan can pull that up. It was submitted.
While she, while she's doing, while she's doing that, Olaf, um, can you just sort of get into a, a quick question that I have for you is, is the, is the real rationale for moving just to get a bigger footprint for your, for your, uh, for your store?
Uh, no, it's a, not really. It's more uh access to private parking and uh safety. It's a more secure location by far than our current and also safety for our employees.
So, Olaf, did you purchase the building?
Uh, we did not. We are a tenant.
Okay. And, and I gotta, I gotta cur, you know, curiosity question. What are you planning on? Um, how are you planning on using the vault?
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, uh, we haven't really determined uh where and how we're that is going to be a discussion uh with the CCC because they uh always have uh requests. And uh, we basically, we need to comply with what, whatever they want and, and so on. So it's not determined yet. But I, I think that I can comment on a little bit about uh the space because it's a much larger space. And we are actually going to offer the spare rooms uh for the Maynard artists so they can uh show their artwork, uh glassware, ceramics, paintings in uh the various office spaces that we have. Uh, we currently actually have uh ten, fifteen paintings in our store uh made by local artists i- in Maynard. But we will expand that and actually offer to other artists uh as well.
You spoke about parking, Olaf. Um, and I get, I always get confused when I, when I look at the area down there. Now, you know, they have the fencing up there, but I think the fencing belongs to the building next door, does it not?
Uh, uh, I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay, so.
Part of the property.
My question was then gonna be, given you mentioned that there would be increased parking, where would you anticipate your customers would be parking?
Well, behind the building. So hopefully you can see that uh picture of the property lines.
Not seeing it yet, but I'm sure we'll get there through the magic of technology.
Okay.
All right, it's, it's in, it's in the packet. Do you want me to bring it up? It's in, it's
Well, so that, so that the, the other people watching the meeting can see it.
My apologies. I'll pull it up.
Yeah, so uh the architect said that uh we can fit five parking spaces behind the building on the property. So five parking, five private parking spaces behind the building.
It's coming up now. Yep, not yet.
Scroll down, Megan, to the next one. Yeah.
See asphalt. Can you blow it up a little bit, Megan? Can, so we can sort of read what's on the, there we go.
So I, I actually had a quick question about the chain link fence. Is that an existing? I know the one along the road is, and I know there's one along the along that runs parallel to the one along the road. So the one that's listed here, is that existing as well?
What was your question, Justine?
So I'm sorry. So when you go down, you know, if you went down alongside the building, sorry. Um, it looks like he'd be blocking with a chain length fence. He blocked in part, part of the parking lot? Or is that just what it already exists and I'm misinterpreting the map?
I believe that's already in place.
Okay, all right. So you're not adding any, you're not changing any kind of traffic flow down that way? Is that, that's what I'm getting at?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. There's no changes to it.
Okay.
I, I have a question. I'm looking, I'm I'm looking at this, at this map that you have and it's, I see where the parking spaces, it says asphalt paved. I assume that's where you want to put the five spaces and says five blocks there. What?
Correct.
That green line, where, where those spaces, um, you know, above? What, what is that green line? Is that just a, is that the, is that a property line?
Yes, that's a property line.
So I guess if you wa, if you're to walk back behind those buildings that run, you know, down Nathan and down Main Street and there's kind of a, you know, corner there and, you know, runs into a corner. What are um, what are those five spaces? Because there aren't spaces in there. Right now, that's just a piece of asphalt, right? It's just empty asphalt spot. There's no lines there. There's no parking spaces. There's nothing. If you put five parking spaces in there, how are you gonna segregate them as parking spaces? And how is it gonna affect the rest of the basin?
Um, it shouldn't affect the rest of the, any of the neighbors because that is uh on the property, right? On the private property. So it's not on any community or town land.
I'm, I'm looking at a Google view and it, and it's
That's what I'm trying to find myself is to Google view.
It's so it's, he, this, this is the bank is at the far corner, if you will, kind of like the, the southwest corner of, of the, of what we call Nathan Court. And, and it's, so it's, it's at the very tail end. So it doesn't seem like it would um take away parking that would otherwise maybe be public or other, or sort of like
Oh yeah, he's create, he's creating new parking spaces. Now, that's not taking away from other parking.
That's what I'm trying to say.
I thought, I took Chris's comment to be the I understand, I understand what you're saying, but if you go in there, the, the businesses that are in that corner, everybody's kind of carved out their own small parking areas and spaces in there, you know what I'm saying? I'm not, if, if it's private property, you can do with it what you want. I'm just kind of asking the question because it's gonna come up when there's five spaces there and the guy in the corner is used to driving in there, parking in the spot. Now he can't because there's five cars parked there.
No, I agree. Cause even on the Google image, I can see someone's parked behind Roasted Peppers. And it, but if that car is there and someone's trying to park in Olaf's spots, I don't know, it's gonna, it would get a little tight.
It just, it just get, I, I, I just, I don't, it's his property. It's the, the, their property. They can do what they want. I just think it, it will. I'm just wondering how it, as we, you know, talk about it, how will it impact um the neighbors? And how does it impact some of the other conversations that we've been having for quite some time about the, the basin and the, and some of the, the um long-term plans for the basin and that stuff? Or does it not affect it at all? I don't know the answer to the question. Megan? Go ahead.
There's the, yeah, so currently we have zero private parking, right? So since uh we're too close to the, and we, we do not have any public parking in front of our store right now. But if we would move, that would actually free up more parking spaces for other businesses on Nathan Street, for example. And in my opinion, the, the new five parking spaces uh should not really affect any public parking availability in the basin. And uh, I'm not sure if you remember, but a few months ago, it was actually a big uh container uh located on, on that area. And so that's pretty much where the parking spaces will be. So it was kind of like a, a trash container uh for uh located there for a few months.
And I guess my observation would just be that in essence, my recollection of that, as we're looking at this map on the screen, and I know you're not seeing it, Olaf, but to the left of the building, where, where, where it says Nathan Street, right below it, which is the, the and then the driveway that goes down. My recollection is that's basically an alleyway, one lane. Um, and I'm concerned with, with traffic being parked, if there's gonna be parking, public parking back there. And I, maybe this is a question for the planning board or somewhere down the road, somewhere else. But I don't know if that's kosher um to have a one-lane roadway. I don't know if it's two lanes. I don't know. I, I think about when I walk by there, as I do my laps around and you look down and there's, sometimes there's a car parked down there. And I think it takes up the whole, the whole space. Um, that you can't get two cars. And then you wonder about public safety. Can a fire truck get down there if there's a car fire? Uh, I guess they could come in the back way. Um, but I'm wondering, is that the access point that, the driveway? Or is, is the access point coming in from behind to other people's property?
The, the access point would be any of the, either from Main Street or uh Nathan Street further up or Summer Street, right? Uh, there are four, I think, four access roads into that public.
Okay, so that alleyway, that alleyway is not your access.
No, no, no. That, that's a, that's a public uh uh Eastman, I think. I don't know if it's town land.
Says right of way, twelve, twelve in, twelve-foot wide benefits locus. I don't know. Uh, seems to be pointing at that. I'm not good at reading these maps. Uh. The only thing that's, the, the one thing that's a little bit interesting is that that chain link fence has probably been up for um it's been a four or five years now. Yeah. Since that chain fence has been up. That I'm, I'm just kind of curious. I would be curious to know why at any one point the landlord and/or Middlesex Savings Bank did not take advantage of putting five parking spaces there. You know, because Middlesex certainly had similar parking needs and similar parking concerns. And, and there was no effort on their part to um ever add parking there. So I'm just kind of, I'd be kind of curious to find out from them. You know, what, what the, why the thought process has changed, them being the um, the landlord, why the thought process has changed now? And we're gonna call that a parking area.
Also, my question, Olaf, is that, is that parking gonna be used for the customers or is that for the employees?
Uh, only customers. Uh, our employees will park, uh, we currently have them parked uh behind Subway and CVS.
Okay.
Uh, that's where we typically, our employees park today. Or the public lot uh by the river. Um.
Over on River Street?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
So.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I, I'm, I'm with Chris relative to the concern about the five parking spaces. But that's not really our, I don't know if that's really our, our concern here um relative to parking spaces for the business. Isn't that a planning board issue more so than a uh than uh our issue for uh for licensing? I don't know.
Right. That sounds about right. Like, I don't know if it, yeah, like, if, if the board has more, obviously its authority is in, obviously, excuse me. But the, the board has authority through the host community agreement. But that, as you're saying, that sounds like a psychic relative issue. Uh, Megan or Bill, if you're still on, um, did, if they move location, is there a special permit requirement? Do they have to go to the planning board?
Sure. There, there's a, it's a new special permit requirement and it would require um you know, a full play, um, public hearing. And in this case, um, traffic and circulation would be a consideration. I don't know, you know, on these, I can't comment on these five spots exactly how it would work out or wouldn't. But uh, that would be part of the review.
Okay.
I just, I just remember um, you know, five years ago, before that um, the fencing went up, when we all used to use the entrance way between um, what is now Art's Specialties and the bank and travel down in the back. As you got to the end of the buildings on the right-hand side, it was nothing. It was an alleyway. And to, to think that that's now going to be five parking spaces where the only access that I see people have to them is coming in from the the main part of the basin, coming in sort of backwards from what I just described. Because you can't get down there that way with the fencing. It's tight and you have to back up to get out of there. Something doesn't make sense to me. But again, that's probably a planning board discussion. And then if, if the planning board decides that that doesn't work for parking, because I don't want to create another CVS parking lot. Uh, and this would be worse, I think, in tightness. Um, if the planning board doesn't pass it, how does that affect approval of this?
That was, that was gonna be my question.
Well, we currently use uh typically our customers, they use the parking on uh Main Street or Nathan Street. So I don't see that that would be much different. We're just adding parking spaces. It, this, right now, we have zero. And if we add one or two, any, any a- additional parking spaces would benefit the town of Maynard, in my opinion. So uh
But well, there would be parking spaces for your customers though, so it wouldn't really uh, it's not adding additional parking spaces for
Well, he's saying, because it's gonna, he's saying he's gonna free up the
Free up, free up the five parking spaces.
Right.
Yeah, I, I see it as very, very tight. I'm looking at that Google Maps. Um, I don't see how that works, but again, I'm not a, I'm not a traffic engineer or a parking engineer or whatever. Um, but I see it as really, really tight. But it's it's just something for, it's just something for Mr. Nims to deal with.
Mm-hmm.
For the planning board, I guess. It's just, it's a planning board committee or zoning, zoning thing. I, you know. But it's just that, it's, that's just a tidy area and it's just a parking's kind of a free-for-all over there. I don't know how, how do you keep it from staying a free-for-all even though there's line spaces, but Looks like, looks more to me like a, it's, it's a one-way nightmare. Uh, because the only way you can get in is coming from uh over towards El Huelo, coming over that way. And Who's, yeah. Who's got the building that, who is the building with the fence now? Art?
Yeah, yeah.
Does he own the building? I don't recall.
He owns the building.
I believe he bought the building. I think he said his uh, his insurance carrier had concerns with opening that up to public access. That was the original, that was the original worry when there was no activity in the building. Remember that building was, was empty for a couple, you know, several months. And then all of a sudden the fence went up. And they said, because there was no one there and everything else, it was, it was an insurance issue. I wonder if it would, why would it be an issue now, if, especially if Art needs parking and parking's at a, at a premium? But I, that's a question for
If he's negotiating with, if he's negotiating with a potential if he, that building could also host, because as this, as this board already approved the host community agreement for um I can't remember the name of, because it's been so long. Sugarloaf, then, then I don't know if Art would be, you know, able, willing to negotiate the, you know, opening it up to a competitor potentially for someone he's hosting. You know, allowing easier access to, to Olaf's business.
So. Go ahead, Justine.
I was gonna say, Bill Nance has his.
No, that's exactly what I was saying, so go ahead.
Oh, uh thank you, um the, you know, we, we're talking about the parking configuration and uh the addition of parking spaces and so on, um this is a proposal that could, you know, be modified significantly when it comes to the planning board. Um however, the um, I don't, you know, like I said, I'm not going to comment on the specific placement of these or whatever. But to pick up some um parking spaces there would probably be something that is consistent with the overall downtown overlay district uh special permit criteria, whether it's five, whether it's two, I don't know what it would be. But that will all be looked at and with the um in this case, we would want a small um parking study provided to the planning board to kind of show how this would work and be impacted or impact the adjacent parking.
So Bill, when you, when you say that there could be substantial changes, what do you mean? I mean building is the building, you're muted. You're muted.
Three parking spaces approved as opposed to five?
Oh, I got it, okay. All right.
So from our standpoint, David, we, to your point, we, even though we're concerned about it, but that is not part of what we're going to be um approving or voting on.
Well, you know, I, I I, I, I don't know, I think that at the um, you know, if this was the first time we were seeing this before we had approved the host agreement, community agreement the first time, I might feel differently. I don't know if I'm mistaken on that approach. Um that, given that it's really just a transfer of location, it may not be, may not mean anything. I don't know if we renegotiate HCA as a result of this or whatever. Um and if that has any impact, so I don't know how much leverage or control we have over whether or not the business moves to a different location, that would be for Greg or for council. And if we don't know, maybe we need, we should uh uh you know, put this off until we have a chance to speak to, to counsel on that topic.
I'm still here, um.
Elizabeth. Liz is here.
No, good.
Um if you'd like, I can take a look at the host community agreement, I don't have it um available, but I can take a look at it and, and let you know what the terms and conditions of that are.
Yeah, that might be wise, just um, you know, I what does the rest of the board think? Are you concerned enough about what are, what we're discussing that we should at least get feedback from council on what are, what our rights and authority is relative to this issue?
The one, the one thing that I'm not sure of, David, is um, you know, we, we did this host community agreement early on, um I think this is the first one that we did.
It was.
And um, and so there's, I don't believe and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there's an address that's actually specified that they have to operate out of. So I'm not necessarily sure, we, I mean, we absolutely can ask um Liz to take a look or um to counsel to look, take a look at it, but if, if it doesn't specify in the agreement, I don't know if we would have any other um reason to say no.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah. But I think that there could be, when, because he's going to have to uh go in front of the planning board, so that could change things there. Uh but from our standpoint, that was, that was the way I asked you that question, David, from our standpoint, we just voting on the transfer basically. Uh you know, from one side to the other.
I will say, I think that, don't moving forward, I think that we have added the host, the addresses to newer host community agreements, so that's something.
Yes.
You know, so we've, we've learned, but it just so happens is one that we haven't done.
You, and that was part of my concern, you may recall, on the second host community agreement that came before us, that they didn't have an address at all and so.
But they're not on play anymore, so.
No, I realize that, but that's, you know, we learn as time goes on. Um so what would the board prefer? We couldn't, we could vote to approve it and let it move along to the planning board and basically we're done. Or we can ask to verify that we, if we have any authority to do anything relative to the host community agreement at all. Or I guess those are our two options.
I will say that once it goes to the planning board, they can't, for underside plan review, they can't um not allow it.
They can't deny the, the change in location, but we can, at this point, we can in your and I, I don't know if I'm necessarily looking to do that. And I'm, I'm not necessarily looking to do that, I'm just making sure that that we're not being sold something that's just not going to be what reality is.
Right, so you, I would have to look at the agreement itself, but your, your license is what allows the use. And site plan review is where they would address the parking issues. Um if you allow for the transfer from one location to another, then it's there and so all they can do is control the circulation and, and parking and things like that.
The license also calls out the address.
Right.
And that's what has to change is a license.
Right.
You'd be, you'd be requesting a license change through the CCC.
Yes.
And that does call out the address. So the address issue has to be addressed either by the planning board and then back to us through the license or by us through the license. Was that correct?
That's my understanding, and I, yeah.
So what would the board want to do? Um I'll, I'll, I'll approach it from either direction, if we want to move forward tonight with it and send it along to the planning board for them to deal with the issues of parking and traffic flow and everything else, or if we want to make sure we have everything lined up and do it in two weeks with approval of council or, and knowledge from council.
But if we could make a change, what would you hope to make? I, I mean, I think if the fundamentals of the HCA stay the same, but at a new location and they've been a successful business and that makes sense for their business, that, that makes sense to me, so I'm not interested in extracting any concession or, or major change that way, and if parking goes to planning board, then then I'm comfortable with, with what we're seeing here.
I don't, I don't, I don't see any reason for us to delay um having a plan, take a look at it.
I agree.
I just.
Okay.
I never see parking spaces there, so. I think the planning board, that's.
I think Bill still has his head up.
Bill, go ahead.
We don't want to get tired, your hand is getting tired, Bill.
It's tired, um uh two things, uh first is that I'm not positive uh that this will require site plan review at all. It will definitely though require special permit review under the downtown overlay district, so to be clear. Um that's where we would be governing uh from, but um uh the special permit would be more than likely, I think in the downtown overlay district, I'd have to dig up, but I, I believe they're being exempt from site plan review. But uh public hearing would be at special permit and downtown overlay district special permit.
Bill, is the special permit for the use or for parking or for something else?
The, the part, the permit would be for use.
Okay.
And in this downtown overlay district, um because it has unique um responsibilities with that permit, there are some different uh types of um mitigation that may be involved and this type of thing, however, the site plan, um I have to look, but I believe reuse of an existing building that has been out of um out of the previous use for less than two years probably would be exempt from the parking requirements as well, but I have to double check, I'm not positive. But I am sure that uh um it would be downtown overlay district special permit and it'd be something we want to look at before we say that this going to require site plan review, I couldn't say it at this point.
So I'll correct my previous statement, Ben, because even if it's allowed um by the board, it could still be denied at a special permit.
Yes, it could be denied under the downtown overlay district. It could be uh under, you know, it would be discretionary at the, at the um planning board.
All right, then it makes sense to move it along to the planning board. So is there a motion?
There is not.
There's no worded, do you want me to just word one?
Yes, please, is, is there a motion necessary, Greg?
Yeah, so also, if you're, if you're approving the change in location, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if the board wanted to do a motion tonight, so I didn't. Right.
So I will move to approve the change in location for Mass Wellspring uh from four to six Nation Street to seventeen Nation Street.
Second. Motion is paid and seconded, any further comments or questions? Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes too. Okay, great, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
With the uh.
Oh, thank you, guys.
Planning board, yeah.
Have a nice week, guys, the last time I was on, I said I have a nice weekend, right, on Tuesday, so.
Wow, wishful thinking.
Yes.
All right, item number, item number nine is uh is our, one of our, one of our board reviews and we're, or actually department reviews, we're going to hear from the Department of Public Works. And uh I know that Justin has a, a lot, very large presentation here, Justin, I hope you can whittle it down to the uh, to the important parts um in the interest of time. Because then your secondary, as the secondary uh conversation is going to be heavy as well, so. Uh take it away relative to the Department of Public Works presentation.
Thank you, David, good evening, everyone, my name is Justin DiMarco, I represent the town of Maynard as the director of Public Works. We are proud to present a general overview of our two, of our fiscal year two thousand twenty-two report as requested by the select board. Um I'm going to try to make this presentation short, sweet and concise. Um Public Works is a multi-dimensional dynamic operation accounting for extreme coordination and project management, which involves collaboration and guidance between highly technical professional specialties. Various trade practices involving multifaceted variations and services that affect citizens' everyday lives in the town of Maynard. There is no other department that affects every single resident in the town of Maynard besides the Department of Public Works. I will go through the slides quickly as Megan is my co-pilot and we're going to try to land this plane quick. So the mission statement was, you know, short and sweet as I just put forth, we can move to the next slide. Uh Public Works Administration is representative of budget, you know, the Department of Public Works in the town of Maynard is the second largest budget um yearly, and that is because we're a combination of multiple divisions and departments under one umbrella. Um we, we also manage um the bulk of all of the extraordinary yearly expense budgets such as large grant opportunities that we receive um yearly. Those fluctuate uh depending on the fiscal year. Next, please. So in front of you is a budget breakdown regarding um the Department of Public Works for FY twenty-two. As you can see, salary represents about sixteen percent, expenses represent about fifty-five percent and capital improvements represent twenty-nine percent. That changes from fiscal year to fiscal year, but for the most part, the expenditures and salaries tend to be very um even. There's slight increases in salary and expenditures, it's usually capital or if there's a shift in services that makes, that may actually bring up expenses. Next slide, please. Um as you can see, this is another analysis, um budget breakdown based off the salary, expenses and capital. And it's actually a breakdown of every single department that falls under the DPW um umbrella. Facilities, wastewater treatment facility, water and sewer, that's treatment and distribution, cemetery, highway and that department. Next slide. Again, core functions, we develop all of the long-term capital improvement plans. Um I would say roughly ninety to ninety-five percent of the capital improvement plans that get presented to the Capcom come through the Department of Public Works. Um we manage all of the capital assets throughout the entire town of Maynard. As you've heard me say in the past, this is um a town that has extreme city services. The DPW in the town of Maynard presents every single service that a public works department could put forth under one umbrella. Next slide, please. We also manage day-to-day logistical operations, policy procedures, implementation, organizational flow charts, we try to modernize and adapt our operation um as we continue on a day-to-day, month-to-month, quarter-to-quarter, year-to-year process. Next slide. We, um as you heard me say in the mission statement, we coordinate and organize with highly skilled technical professionals. So we're, you know, adapting engineering processes with trades and making sure that we bridge those gaps for efficiency and effective um projects. Next slide. We also assist with um the majority, the procurement uh processes that happen, they happen under the DPW umbrella. It is not ninety percent, I would say roughly procurement for the town of Maynard, seventy percent of the procurement is probably under the DPW realm and we assist uh the town administrator Greg Johnson and I work hand-in-hand with the procurement processes. We also manage uh significant contracts, we have large service contracts under the DPW. We actually have two of the largest service contracts that we manage under the DPW. And two of those are actually our um, our contracts for services to provide operational um services at the wastewater treatment facility under Veolia and we also um oversee solid waste hauling contracts with Yale Harvey. Next slide. Um as you can see, this is our current admin department under our fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Um director of public works, I have an assistant, Marie Miranda, department assistant, Debbie Lee. Uh Water and Sewer Superintendent Michael Hatch and we have an on-call engineer in Wayne Amico. Uh next slide, please. So this is a comparison to our current staffing of FY twenty-two versus our proposed staffing from a department head request of proposed staffing for FY twenty-three. As you can see, the Department of Public Works is trying to modernize its um, its operations. We've included the request for an operations manager and there is a large operational gap between the department director, myself and our um boots on the ground, our uh, there is almost no middle management when it comes to the town of Maynard's Department of Public Works. Um modernizing the admin department and creating uh what is now an industry standard as a business manager under the DPW realm. This is uh common practice because most DPWs in the Commonwealth tend to have the second biggest budget and we actually have the most dynamic procurement contract services budget, we handle the most invoices. And we are also looking to try to modernize our engineering processes, right now, we currently have an on-call engineer that provides eight hours per week on average of service. And town of Maynard is right for a full-time forty-hour-a-week town engineer. Next slide, please. This is our DPW admin request budget for FY twenty-three, we can skip that. Uh one of our biggest departments is our highway division, their core function is repair, maintenance and improvement of public right-of-way infrastructure, sidewalks, roadways, um stormwater management. Next slide. They also handle all the fleet maintenance of the entire town minus the, the highly technical apparatus for the fire department. And when I say highly technical, I'm talking about the towers, ladders and pumper, but we handle every single other fleet um asset within the town of Maynard, from the police cruisers to the school trucks to the DPW vehicles. Next slide. We also handle roadside vegetation management for public safety and stormwater infrastructure, as this board is well aware, MS four is continually applying regulations and we are trying to adapt as fast as we can. Those restrictions and regulations are unfunded mandates, as you know, which are never fun. Continue, please. Um one of the core functions throughout the winter processes for the highway division is to manage and operate the snow and ice um services that we provide to the town of Maynard. We do this in a three-phase approach, we provide de-icing operations, which is um your basic salting function to uh remove anything from three inches of snow accumulation and ice and under, that is our principal policy. We also move in a manner for providing plowing, snow removal of roadways, um and then we shift into our second phase, which is plowing, snow removal of pedestrian sidewalks. We currently do not have a staff large enough to do sidewalks and roadways at the same time. So our staff actually concentrates on roadway safety in regards. So our staff actually concentrates on roadway safety in regards to snow and ice, and then we shift to sidewalks. This is sometimes cumbersome to residents as it will, depending on the storm's accumulation, will sometimes take us several days to clear pedestrian sidewalks. Next slide, please. Um this is our personal flow chart for our Highway Division for FY twenty-two. As you can see, we have a Highway Foreman, Special Equipment Operator, Lead Mechanic, two skilled labors, and we have a vacant skilled laborer. He's sitting in Chris's upstairs. Next slide. Uh this is our personal highway comparison, so current staffing FY twenty-two, as as I stated, we have a vacant position. The Department of Public Works um and throughout the Commonwealth is really having trouble retaining um skilled labors. We can't compete with the private industry. The influx of federal money and state money has really driven up the wage salaries for private contractors. So we're really having trouble trying to uh backfill this position. But as you can see, the proposed staffing for FY twenty-three actually does not increase staffing. It just shifts ba- based on some contractual obligations. And we're moving uh one of our skilled labors to a second special equipment operator, which provides redundancy. And we're going to shift that um skilled labor position to potentially a labor position to try to acquire somebody with less skills that we can train and help. Next slide, please. This is our FY twenty-three Highway Request Budget, as you can tell, it's very hard to read, but I'm sure you can see it on board notes. Next slide. This is our FY twenty-three Snow and Ice Budget. Next slide. Cemetery and Parks Division is another uh department that falls under the uh DPW umbrella. They perform repair, maintenance and improvement of all municipal owned grounds. Uh Glenwood Cemetery, which represents twenty-five acres, they perform primary duties, which are burial services and cremations. They maintain the vegetation on Glenwood Cemetery through uh turf management, tree ma- tree maintenance. Continue. They also manage through an MOU agreement between the schools and the town of Maynard, all the athletic fields, which equates to thirteen acres. Um representing the Maynard Public Schools, which is nine point two five acres. The Select Board, which is roughly one acre, and Conservation, which is roughly uh an acre and a half. Continue. Cemetery and Parks, again, athletic fields, um we also manage uh every aspect of the athletic field from irrigation to aggregation. But we handle parks and playgrounds within those athletic fields, so depending on the location. We may also maintain the playground structures that sit within a park or an athletic field. Next slide, please. Our cemetery personnel consists of three individuals, cemetery foremen, skilled laborer and a laborer. This is another comparative slide of FY twenty-two. As you can see, that represents what was a uh what was in front of you, and our proposed staffing increase of FY twenty-three based off of um. Trying to maintain and meet industry standards and stakeholders' wants in regards to athletic fields and town grounds and facilities. So we have requested an additional skilled labor slash laborer position in our department head FY twenty-three request. Next slide. This is our FY twenty-three Cemetery and Parks Requested Budget. Next slide. So this is the most dynamic opportunity that the DPW has to deal with on a day-to-day basis. Uh the town of Maynard has a water and sewer division that operates and maintains uh public drinking water supply and distribution. And when I say supply, we produce our own water and treat it, and then we pump it into a distribution system that reaches almost ninety-eight percent of the residents of the town of Maynard. This is a very complex and dynamic system, and regulations continue to increase, which drives up costs. As you can see, our um water and sewer division represents three-fourths of our ento- of our entire water and sewer department. That one-fourth is contract services of Veolia for the wastewater treatment plant. So um you can continue. Um as stated, distribution network, most of our assets are well over um seventy to eighty years old. Um we are consistently dealing with asset failure um throughout the community. And we address those on an on-call process, we develop long-term capital improvement plans, and as the board is aware, we've. Consistently looked at long-term financial planning to appropriately respond to the failure points of our asset moving forward. Continue. Um as stated, water production, treatment, distribution, the board may or may not be aware that we have a water capacity production issue. This actually goes back to something that was brought up um in regards to the. Um recent regulations that Bill Nemser was talking about regarding the MBTA uh host town. So we have not only a failing asset under the ground, which is pipes and collection systems. We have a production capacity issue, meaning we cannot pull enough water out of the ground to produce it. This is a major hurdle and will be most likely DEP's comments in regards to their recommendation. Pushing back against the Department of Housing Development. So as you may have heard, Cav- uh Gavin Stone recommendation where we can put pressure on some of our politicians, unfortunately, DEP is a very isolated and strong authority. They do not wiggle or move in regards to environmental impact. They do not shrink times based off the need of the community. We have actually witnessed this forty years ago when we lost White's Pond Road and we had to put Rockland Ave on, they shut down White's Pond Road. We needed water, it didn't matter, they shut it off. DEP has a large authority. When it's, when it comes to tapping new well sources or new ground sources. The amount of data and analytics that go into the permitting process require many years of study. In regards to the hydrology of the location and the drawdown points before they permit it. A typical expedited permitting process takes three to five years. Mass Works are not a savior point when it comes to this because Mass Works need to be spent within a year. Our long-term financial plan, our five-year financial plan under the Water and Sewer Enterprise is the appropriate method moving forward. And we are using our opera funds as allocated through the select board. To move and expedite all of the piloting and permitting process, that is our savior moving forward. And then we can discuss in long-term where our housing goals should be for the community if we have capacity to produce. Next slide, please. So within our water and sewer aspect, we also have an extremely old sewer. We actually have one of the most original sewers within the uh within the Commonwealth. Um i.e. Civil War era regarding the Millimane. And that goes all the way down to the Alps where we have some issues crossing the river with some of our sewer sewer collection systems. So when you hear me say we have a water capacity issue, we also have a sewer capacity issue. Treatability, allowance to increase our affluent capacities within our collection system. We work diligently and have five, ten, fifteen-year plans to move forward with those processes, but right now that is actually a second. Function behind our water capacity production. Please continue. Uh sewer continued, um as you can see, we have, we receive large fluctuations of sewer in our collection system. Anywhere from point zero eight seven million gallons a day up to two point three five. What does that trigger? We have what's called infu- uh infiltration of stormwater. And this is a reflection of the failure of our collection system, so groundwater is penetrating our sewer system, it's getting through our manholes. It penetrates through gaps in our system, and it actually affects how we uh process our wastewater at the treatment facility. We have long-term plans and built-in financial models within our enterprise fund to address I and I moving forward. Please continue. This is another function of uh sewer correction. As you can imagine, I can kind of circle back on everything, water and sewer is highly demanding when it comes to regulations and reporting. Um it takes almost forty hours a week for one of my admin staff to keep up with some of the regulations, and we fall behind. That is why I presented an increase to our admin um support under our Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund to help address this issue. Please continue. This is what represents uh town of Maynard's DPW Water and Sewer Division, this is our in-house staff. We have a Water and Sewer Foreman, Water and Sewer Operator, Secondary Operator, two secondary operators, a laborer. Um sorry, a third secondary operator and a laborer, please continue. This is our comparison from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three. As you can see, there's some collective bargaining opportunities, so shifting one of our secondary operators to our primary operators. This is covered under our water and sewer rates that were accepted. Please continue. This is the water FY twenty-three budget. Please continue. This is our sewer FY twenty-three requested budget. Consider, continue. So this is just a slide to help represent some people, um all of our residents fully understand that the operation of the wastewater treatment plant is managed on a day-to-day basis by Veolia North America. But the asset and contractor still managed by the Department of Public Works. Our Water and Sewer Superintendent still manages the day-to-day operation of this staff, and the reporting um requirements fall on both the DPW and Veolia. Please continue. This is the wastewater treatment um FY twenty-three budget. Please continue. Um the Facilities Department for the town of Maynard also falls under the DPW umbrella, the Facilities Division is um tasked with repair, maintenance and improvement of all municipal facilities. Minus the school facilities, but technically the DPW Director for the town of Maynard is also the town's chartered facilities manager. So the facilities and the schools still somewhat fall under the authority of the Director of Public Works, but we work together with the school department. They have an operation supervisor and the town side has an assistant facilities manager that assists with these processes. Please continue. Our uh town side represents uh one assistant facility director, and we have a part-time custodian slash janitor that um helps out in the town hall. To um to assist our assistant facility director, so the focus can be on asset management. Please continue. As you can see, this is a comparative slide FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three, what we're looking to do is actually just increase the part-time hours of our janitor. Please continue. This is our FY twenty-three facilities requested budget, please continue. So instead of creating five hundred slides, this is actually the concise DPW version. Um as you can see, and and if you go back to the beginning, the DPW's fingers are in almost every operation in the town of Maynard. And this is a representation of our um our processes in regards to the master plan. I didn't want to uh ruin Jason Creel's presentation, but as you can see that we are um, we handle a lot of the goals um within the master plan. And that is my conclusion. Is there any questions?
Wow. Uh not too much there. Uh can I ask you to start over?
It's right in here, David, I'm ready.
Um one of, one of the things that I hear most commonly about the DPW. And believe me, I know how much you guys are working and how much you're, how hard you're working and the whole staff. But I I hear repeatedly about the roads, and as we all know, those of us who are involved know that the um. The funding is limited, not only do we just have chapter ninety, but then we, we can only afford based on our, our budget to add in a little bit more beyond the chapter ninety funds that are allowed from the town. I mean, from the state, so therefore we, we have a plan that you guys devise to engineering processes, et cetera. And then we have these unaccepted streets that uh we have to decide whether we want to upgrade those when we're not getting benefited for them. So anyway, can you give us a little Reader's Digest version of um. The situation as you see it with our roads, sidewalks and transportation uh here in Maynard?
Yeah, David, so actually the DPW will be presenting to the board in roughly uh a month to a month and a half, once we receive final approval of our allocated uh chapter ninety funds letter. We have developed ninety percent of our FY twenty-three plans for paving, and we have addressed both unaccepted and accepted roads. We've also put together a five-year forecast to see where our trends are with our investments.
So I won't steal your thunder and we'll leave it for two, three weeks away or three meetings away, two meetings away or whatever, so okay, any questions from the board?
Justin, you mentioned the, 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 sometimes it takes a delay for the clearing of sidewalks after the clearing of roads, what would it take to overcome that? Is that, is that um uh is that to simply increasing the, the, the.
Manpower.
Monetary line for that, well manpower, but paying for the manpower is where I'm getting at, is that what we're talking about, or is there another aspect of that I'm missing?
So unfortunately, in the Commonwealth, most contract services do not provide sidewalk maintenance equipment, they're very costly and they're very specialized. I will just tell you that we have what's called a bombardier, and it is roughly a quarter million to four hundred thousand dollars for a piece of equipment that may be utilized eight times a year. Uh most contractors don't invest in an asset like that because it doesn't have long-term payback. So typically, this falls on communities, towns, cities, et cetera. So you'd be looking at hiring full-time staff, now, I'm not saying that we couldn't use the full-time staff, it would most likely be under the Highway Department. We could utilize them throughout the sea, all four seasons, but that is, you're talking about roughly fifty-eight to seventy thousand dollar salaries a year for every single piece. We operate three sidewalk uh pieces of equipment. And as you know, in Maynard, we have a lot of sidewalks, and that takes a lot of manpower. And typically, uh for safety concerns, sometimes the reason there's delay. In our staff going into the sidewalks is per DOT, our staff is only allowed to drive for so long. And when they hit levels of long-term storms, they have to rest legally and for safety and to meet our policies. And sometimes uh residents, you know, this becomes an issue. Um that would be explored through full-time opportunities within the Highway Division looking forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, uh you know, that, um I appreciate your explanation, and I think that the expectations a lot of times from our. Um residents, uh they, they uh don't understand, and this is a, a clear educational and informational aspect of things, so they understand the expectations and what it takes. Uh we appreciate all the hard work you guys do, and I know that large storm that we had, and a lot of people were unsatisfied with the sidewalks, I. From my perspective, I think you guys did a nice job clearing their sidewalks uh pretty quickly, and it wasn't days after, it was the same day, in my opinion, so. Uh again, you know, the expectations unfortunately are, are higher than what could be, you know, or delivered from that standpoint, but thank you for everything you guys do.
I will like to let the board know that most DPWs throughout the Commonwealth have started to remove sidewalk services as a process. Because it is extremely expensive, the assets to manage and maintain are extremely expensive, and have adopted bylaws that require residents. Um in front of the, with public rights-of-way and sidewalks in front of their property are required to do so. The town of Maynard still provides a service. And most communities, I mean, take Whiskers.
I was just gonna say that.
Not plow sidewalks, and they have a lot of revenue coming in.
Yep. I was just gonna say that, some other cities or towns don't do that, so they don't, don't provide that service, so, yeah.
Stan or Chris? Or Jeff, if you have another comment?
No, I. Um talk a little bit, just switching gears, um you have um. A lot of personnel operating heavy equipment in addition to the licensing procedures, um how do you ensure employee safety and, and. Public safety in addition with, you know, all those pieces of large machinery that your, your staff operates?
Yeah, so it takes extreme coordination, we have internal safety policies, we have operational procedures, um and all of those are followed, they're monitored. And so when you heard me say at the beginning that there's a gap between the DPW Director's position and the subordinates or the workers, the boots on the ground. Typically, you have operations managers, uh general supervisors that help to bridge that gap. We rely very heavily on some of our job descriptions that aren't necessarily um compensated for those positions. Now, for the town of Maynard DPW, we are very lucky that a majority of our staff is homegrown Maynard residents. Second, third generation Maynard residents. We do need to start to think long-term, we are not having second, third generation Maynard residents backfilling our positions. And if we don't start to adapt, we will potentially lose out on quality. We have quality because these people grew up in this town. They go the extra mile and take a little less to make sure their town is uh the best it can be with a little bit of pride. I know that, you know, not all residents see it, but I'm gonna tell you, we also receive a number of emails of pride. Um we received one from Josh Morse recently, and that was actually our uh Highway Supervisor. That took a little bit extra time to make sure that um he helped out a resident in the town, so.
Thank you.
Justine, did you have something?
Sorry, um no, I actually just wanted to thank Justin for the, for the uh plethora of information. Um I think that it is a great overview, um and it helps explain a lot of different. Ways that the department is pulled and uh why sometimes choices are made. Um regarding maintenance or other um other aspects that maybe there's reasons that, you know. Just, just the sheer funding um and manpower of things that, you know, there are trade-offs that, that are made, but I. But I think this is going to be very helpful in the future as well. So thank you very much for putting this time into this, Justin.
Chris, standing.
I just, no, I just think the two, the two slides about the age of our assets kind of tell a little bit of the story. Cause you hear a lot of questions about why is this street dug up? Why is there, why is there a company, you know, doing this? It was always, why is your company doing that? And it's, you know, along, I mean, the last week or two along Powder Mill has been, you know, people, you know, laying pipe or doing whatever. It just, it just speaks to that, those two slides in itself. That's, you know, that's the, that's the price of having a, as you said, almost a hundred-year-old aging infrastructure. But, you know, we've, we're working with it. So.
We, we also want to comment and appreciate the fact that your response time when people are complaining about the potholes and things like that. You guys have responded quickly and I know it's going to be more work than when the weather breaks to have a more, more of a permanent type of patching. But right now, you guys are responding quickly and I think the, you know, people should be happy that you're responding as quick as possible.
And one last question for me and then I see Mr. Stone has a question, so we'll get to that. But Justin, is there an issue with telephone poles in Maynard, especially along Powder Mill? That are in bad spots so that the bombardier can't get through? So therefore we can't even provide the access of the, the sidewalk plow?
Yeah, David, there is several locations throughout the community. The sidewalk machine is designed to meet like today's standards, five-foot sidewalks, ADA accessibility. Because of a lack of long-term improvement from generations before, we have a lot of sidewalks that are three feet wide with a utility pole slapped right in the middle. And to avoid private property damage, we have to, we have to actually jump off the sidewalk and go around. Now, this is not great for ADA compliance, but it is the best that we can provide with the resources we have. We do see a lot of volunteers out there. I will give Randy James some kudos. There is a lot of volunteers that will go out with their snow blowers and clean them. This is something, as you've heard me say, and I think this board rarely recognized, we have a lot of volunteers in Maynard. And those are the types of commitments that will help us continue to be a walkable community and will assist the department actually keeping your tax rate potentially down due to budget constraints.
Thanks. Mr. Stone.
Thank you for calling me. Just a note for the chair. I do have multiple questions, but I will, I will hold off at the end of each one and I'll let you call me again. But I'll leave my hand raised as long as I have questions. I'll ask them.
Ask the questions. I want, in the interest of time, to start, start the questions and see how far we go, but we have, we have more business to follow.
And I, I can certainly ask these questions at a later date. Let me just get started and dive in for Mr. DiMarco. So I noticed that you were, for Parks and Recreation, you were, you were looking to add some administrative staff. And I also noticed that the schools are requesting an athletic director. And I understand the MOU between the schools and DPW really has DPW managing the fields. But what I do see is kind of an overlap in responsibilities, at least traditionally, like the athletic directors of other schools traditionally have managed the fields of the schools. And yet we have like these two administrative positions in a really small town where like the fixed costs get really, really hurt us. Especially like a fixed administrative cost. So what I'm wondering is there's some way that we could combine those two roles together? Cause I know there's some, there's some administration that needs to be done for the athletic fields. Is there some way that we could have the athletic director double up as the manager for the parks or somehow vice versa?
Kevin, those, that's an incorrect statement. The DPW did not request admin support. We requested a laborer. And athletic director is not a manager of athletic fields. They are a manager of permits and athletic use through the school department. They are actually not one in the same at all. We are, our forestry parks and cemetery foreman actually manages the operation of the cemetery and controls the operation and staffing logistics to provide that maintenance. We do not deal with permitting. We do not deal with coordination of athletic programs through the school or rec or private industries. They are actually two different situations.
Okay, thank you for clarifying and I'm going to ask my next question unless you want to stop me, David.
No, go ahead.
So the other thing I've noticed with the trash removal is that we've implemented a sticker program. And I think that sticker program is really hurting.
Kevin, can I cut you off there? Because our next presentation is going to be strictly about the sticker program and trash collection. And possibly at the end of that, you'll be able to get an answer to the question that you've got.
I'll withdraw my question. I just have one last one.
Go ahead.
How much are we spending? Could you, do you have a ballpark estimate of how much we are spending on sidewalk removal currently?
On side for snow and ice?
For snow and ice, yes.
Yeah, probably. So our snow and ice budget right now is probably somewhere in the two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar expenditure range. And I would say anywhere between twenty and thirty thousand. But that's a hard comparison as this staff already exists. So it's really an hourly wage that we're, we're putting in there. And it's the, we would also have to do with efficiency of our assets based off of use. So it's something that we could definitely do, but based on our resources, diving that deep in the analytics, sometimes become a constraint.
Okay, I'm, I'm just contemplating like actually implementing those, those bylaws that you mentioned that mandates no removal at the front of people's properties. But thank you for answering my questions and thank you for that clarification regarding the athletic director.
Thanks. And hopefully, and hopefully your question on the waste disposal will be covered during the presentation coming up right now.
Absolutely. I look forward to it. Thank you again for the chair.
Okay, Justin. We can now go into the solid waste and recycling conversation.
Perfect. All right. You ready again, Megan? Let's land this ship quickly. So DPW Director Justin DiMarco, we are presenting to the board. A review and an update of the town of Maynard's solid waste program. Back in two thousand nineteen, when I first was onboarded in the town of Maynard, we had to address some long-term twenty-year deficiencies as part of the program. Large revenue gaps and constraints to our general budget and our yearly allotments. So we implemented a summary findings and a memo recommendation to the board for adoption of increasing user fees. So since that inception, we have collected analytical data to do a financial review, a more accurate financial review from, on a three-year window. So currently, right now, Main and DPW oversees the hauler contract of E.L. Harvey. And we also have a secondary contract that we are in a collaboration contract with almost fifteen other communities to dispose of all of our solid waste at a facility called Wheel Abrater. So the process is thickering bags, fifteen gallon, thirty-two gallon are max for our policies. They're picked up through E.L. Harvey through curb side pickup and they are brought to Wheel Abrater and processed. And we receive invoices from Wheel Abrater and E.L. Harvey. Continue. So our current program is two dollars for fifteen gallon bag and four dollars for a thirty-two gallon bag. And our limitations are for bulky stickers, which include like mattresses, couches, things of that nature, fourteen dollars. But there's some limitations based off of weight requirements and size requirements to fit in, into the vehicle. Next slide. So in front of you, you'll see a sticker sale revenue analysis based off the user fees collected FY nineteen, FY twenty and FY twenty-one. Based off twenty-two's models, we don't have all the data to provide an accurate assessment, but a three-year window is still something that we could, we could really evaluate. Please continue. As you can see, based on the board's recommend, the board's adoption of the sticker increases. We were actually able to reduce the general fund obligation to the program, thus saving taxpayer money for reallocation to other purposes, schools, fire, police, whatever the select board ended up allocating that funds. But this is a good model to see what happens when you move user fees to a service that require that. It's a proportionate system that allows for a user that may put out fifteen bags to pay their fair share versus say, an elderly couple that provide one bag every two weeks. So as you can see, our current deficit is in the range of two hundred eighteen thousand to two hundred thirty-three. Like I said, FY twenty-two isn't one hundred percent complete, but I did want to try to give you a good trend. Next slide. So this is a bar graph based off of monthly revenue. As you know, we sell stickers at multiple private vendors and within town hall. All of that was tracked over the past three years per month. And this is, this is a representation of that. Please continue. In front of you is actually a representation of the monthly expenditures. That is the two contracts. The E.L. Harvey hauler contract and the Wheel Abrater tipping tonnage fee contract. There is a blurp on FY nineteen because we didn't have that data. So don't mind that little guy. The rest of it is pretty accurate. So this is another breakdown, really comparing revenues, expenses and deficit. So you get a kind of a, a proportionate look at what we're looking at in FY twenty-one. As you can see, we have shrunk the deficit, but what we're seeing is expenditure costs rise, which are tipping fees, tonnage. And we're also seeing contract obligations rise. So if we can't keep up with revenue requirements or user fees, that deficit will start to increase again. Thus, having the board moving to reallocation or taking away from services and providing for solid waste. Please continue. Again, this is another slide. This really breaks down both of the expenditures. So this is, I'm sorry, this is another revenue expenditure slide, which just gives another proportionate look. So we, we kind of went a little heavy on the fiscal analysis. Please continue. This is a month-by-month general fund obligation. And when I say general fund obligation, that is a budget that is recommended and improved FY twenty-two, FY twenty-one under the DPW umbrella. So sometimes there is a common misconception when you look at the DPW's entire budget. Under highway, it looks rather large, but highway actually captures almost seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars of the solid waste program. So technically that service is a misrepresentation of what the DPW actually does from a day-to-day. So roads, sidewalks, things of that nature. So it kind of disproportionately is our budget. Please continue. So this is a breakdown based off of the two contract vendors. As you can see, E.L. Harvey has an incremental increase that's due to the contract. And then you can see that once we initiated extreme enforcement in two thousand nineteen, I'm sure you remember all the calls of Justin out there with his cell phone taking pictures and the green stickers everywhere. The results are from FY twenty to FY twenty-one and you see a reduction of fifty thousand dollars of abuse. And controlling that is something that is vital to maintain this service moving forward. Our processes are inefficient. Continue. This is another slide representing the general fund contribution month by month. You can continue.
Dustin, could I interrupt you on that last slide?
Yep.
So if I were to add up the general fund and the estimated revenue line, would I be able to get basically an estimate of what proportion is covered from the, from the sticker versus the that we're subsidizing?
Yeah, it's like three slides up. I know I'm going fast, Jeff. So it's the one with the three bar graphs. So expenditure, revenues represent the sticker, expenditures represent the general fund obligation and the deficit.
And then just a quick question, what's causing these variations from like why are August and January so high, November so low for?
It's based, so a lot of our residents buy stickers in bulk. So like seasonal buying. So if they're going to go to the store, some residents have a lot of money. They may buy four months worth of stickers. Others may buy it week to week depending on what it is. So that's the variation of the sticker program. But it is, it is a reality and it is a correlation that you could put, as the board may remember, we did an indirect analysis on water and sewer. But we also included solid waste. And there is a cost hidden with town staff that has to sell stickers, move stickers, invoice, et cetera. And sometimes that cost burden is reflective on the treasure collector's office in the DPW. So this is just a representation of that heaven quote.
All right.
Please continue, Megan. So our ongoing concerns, which is everybody's concerns. Trust me when I say the DPW knows the problems of the solid waste service in the town of Maynard. We get every email. We get every phone call. So the present collection method is inefficient and this was also indicated in my two thousand nineteen memo when the DPW presented our increased sticker proposal. The violations are the big, the big issue. And when I say violations, I'm talking about sticker abuse where people use forty-five gallon bags and may throw a two dollar or four dollar sticker and it, it doesn't, it doesn't account for our policy, which drives up the tipping cost. Now, again, I, our contractor identifies this and occasionally will deny or put a green sticker. But there is a lot of inefficiencies and subjective approaches to a driver indicating barrels versus bag versus sticker. It is very hard to decipher a forty-five gallon bag from a thirty-two gallon bag when you're trying to pick up, you know, a thousand residents in a day. So DPW doesn't have dedicated enforcement services. Part of my enforcement process was to start this analytical data to really have a hard conversation on what our services are moving forward. But unfortunately, we don't have the staff to consistently go out there and enforce this and we're relying on our contractor. Though I can red flag it through our invoices with Wheel Abrater when I see, you know, some, some deficiencies. I will sometimes go and follow E.L. Harvey, start to flag them, put them on notice. But for the most part, we're relying on a contract to do enforce a rule and regulation under the town of Maynard. That is an inefficient and ineffective process. Continue, please. So why am I in front of you today? Our current E.L. Harvey, E.L. Harvey contracts for our hauling services expires on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Our Wheel Abrater contract is still valid to two thousand twenty-seven. We need to, one, address our current hauler contract effective for July first, moving forward with our services. But I think this is a bigger conversation moving forward. What do we want our services to look like? Do we want services? What does that look like? You know, to Gavin's point, you know, in my memo, you'll see a recommendation of Greg Johnson to develop a task force of, you know, technical experts within the town government. And, and control this and come up with a, a strong recommendation so that, one, the select board can financially position themselves to transition into a program if they so choose to. Next slide, please. So as you can see, there is innovative collection methods. So in the town of Maynard, we actually al- already provide automated collection methods for our streamlined recycling process. Most of our residents have ninety-six gallon streamlined recycling automated carts. And as you can see, there is no subjective nature to the driver. Pulls up cart, lids closed, dump it. We're not, it is a controlled method of tonnage. So one of the recommendations is to also shift to solid waste in this manner. You'll see that moving forward. Next slide, please. Another method, which is actually somewhat antiquated, but it is a better system than our current method, is a pre-designated bag. So you would buy and purchase them in the same way that you do with your sticker program now, but this is another method to control tipping and tonnage fee. You can't overfill this bag. It will explode. So we're not talking about someone stuffing in forty-five gallons worth of trash in a thirty-two gallon bag that can only handle that. So this is a method that we could potentially adopt sooner rather than later and we'll address that in later slides. So this is a projection scenario compared to current sticker fees and adoption of methods. So scenario two, weekly recycling. Scenario three is bi-weekly recycling, which is our current process. Scenario four is private pickup. And scenario one would be the cart system. Now, the reason that you see the gap close between revenues and expenditures for the automated cart is because we haven't, we don't have an already in-place user fee. So we would just adopt our user fees to potentially address the revenue costs. Unfortunately, as you may or may not know, buying those automated carts is a capital upfront cost. So we can either include it in the contract with E.L. Harvey, but then that brings the contract up or we can purchase them ourselves in advance, which we would have to acquire a large funding source. So please continue. So option one, as stated, automated carts eliminates reliance on general fund, pretty much operates in a manner like water and sewer. Quarterly charge, same as tax bill. We would send out quarterly bills, just like everybody's tax bill with a solid waste program if you chose to participate. It reduces reliance on town support. One, enforcement. Two, we're not selling stickers anymore. Once the carts are out front, they're there. And all we're doing is automated billing situations and that is a much more simplistic method. It eliminates pesky stickers. The cost, the anticipated cost as the analysis put forth was a thirty-two gallon cart. We would offer two different cart sizes. A thirty-two gallon cart would be roughly three thirty-seven a week. A sixty-four gallon cart would roughly be five seventy-seven a week. That's for solid waste. The state is moving away from all haulers picking up through public services bulky waste. It is an extremely uncontrolled situation that is affected. It is an extremely uncontrolled situation that is affecting our limited landfill resources. So they are getting mixed into the solid waste streamline, creating excess waste where they, once you hire a private bulky waste contractor on your own, so a bagster, a dumpster, hiring E L Harvey to come out once a week to pick up, you know, ten mattresses, whatever you have. They're required through their processes of removal to go to different facilities that don't allow intermingling of solid waste. So this is a sustainable effort. Mass D P through this all race program is really pushing and eliminating bulky waste curbside pickup. Continue. So projection scenario two, very similar to what we have now. E L Harvey cost increased three hundred and twenty two thousand two sixty five for the new anticipated contract. The deficit increase would be four hundred and fifty thousand of general fund allocation. This adds weekly recycling. Right now, the town of Maynard provides bi-weekly recycling. This is an addition. So we would add weekly recycling of your ninety six gallon streamlined bin. The sticker fee increase to close that gap would have to look like a two dollar bag increase would go to three, four dollars would go to six. That if we were to adopt that, the anticipated deficit reduced by, or reduced to a hundred and fifty thousand. We could still use scenario two with the designated bags to control tonnage. We would anticipate the cost per bag would be the same as the sticker price. So what would a customer in Maynard get with this? Really strictly, they would get the opportunity to go shift from stickers to bags, a more controlled process, and they would actually be able to increase their recyclables. Please continue. Scenario three is pretty much as is. E L costs, E L Harvey costs would increase by seventy two thousand two fifty seven. The deficit would increase to three hundred thousand. We continue our bi-weekly recycling current practice. If we were to consider increasing bags to close that deficit, again, two to three, four to six, the deficit would be eliminated. So it would be even. So there would be no general tax allegation if we made that switch. We can still utilize under our current process, the pre-printed town seal bags. So there's no change in cost for E L Harvey, the hauler, to pick up pre-printed bags or sticker bags. There's no change in cost. So that is one where we would still control the tipping tonnage fee, the Wheeler Brader cost. We would help reduce that. Again, in this scenario, to meet mass D P goals, we would be eliminating both bulky waste direct pickup with E L Harvey. But we would be providing information through our website and E L Harvey has dedicated a truck weekly, one day a week, and a pre-designated service. So like Justine, if she wanted to get a mattress, she would call E L Harvey. And they would say on Friday, we're doing bulky pickup. Can you please put a curbside on Friday? And she would pay a fee directly to E L Harvey. Or she can hire any contractor she wants. Please go to scenario four. So the reason I bring up scenario four is Justin DeMarco goes to a majority of all committee meetings, including tribal, tribal or committee meetings, FinCom, Select Board, School Committee meetings. There is a consistent conversation being had about reducing the budget, finding revenue sources. If you were to go to scenario four, you would allow every resident to hire their own contractor. This is actually something that residents can do currently under the Board of Health policies. They would independently hire their own contractor and their own services. They can go automated, do whatever they want. It's a capital situation. And that would completely reduce and eliminate general fund allocation, which would actually result in a two hundred and forty thousand dollar revenue stream that could be reallocated to other services. It's just for consideration, but understand this may came, this may come with some ramifications from some residents.
Justin, question on this particular slide. Do we have any reason to believe that the cost resident pays now for trash would go down if they had to do it privately? It seems by everyone doing it individually, then, okay, great. So I'm just paying for it through one way more than less way than through the town.
Yeah. So I did when, in two thousand nineteen, I did a summary of findings. As you guys may or may not know, I live in the town of Hudson and we hire our own private services. So I was able to compare my cost, which was a local vendor that also provided services in Maynard. For a family of four, you may see a reduction. If you're a heavy producer, you actually would see a reduction in cost if you went to a private hauler. For a family of two or an elderly couple, they would most likely see an increased cost affected to them. Please continue, Megan. So as you can see, this is a reflection of if we went with scenario two, three, and we increase the sticker prices, this would close deficits. So if we're looking for from wiggle room within the general fund, this is an opportunity that can be explored for future or consider now if that was what the select board wanted to continue to have that conversation. Excuse me, this is a projection based off of all of our input. So please continue. So Waste Zero is a company that is already contracted under the state of Massachusetts. We could procure this service immediately. And Waste Zero actually provides a bag service and they provide bags of fifteen gallons, thirty two gallons. We could implement the same price proposals that we currently have now or increase them, whatever we look forward to our financial end game. These are used in multiple scenarios. So we've gotten some concerns with, okay, if we went to an automated cart system and I'm a heavy producer and I can only put out sixty four gallon carts, what do I do with the remaining solid waste? Because we don't offer a transfer station. We would actually use these to help subsidize those heavy producers, which we would still receive revenue for those producers and it's still controlled cost. So we would be able to address an elderly couple with a thirty two gallon barrel up to a family of four with a sixty four and maybe higher. If you're a heavy partier and you go crazy and you produce a lot of trash, you would, you would potentially use the bag system. We could also implement the bags for our current sticker program come July first. Now I will tell you that's something that we need guidance on immediately. We secured a grant through Mast D P Solid Waste over a year and a half ago. And we're now at the point where we can contract with that grant. And they will provide funding of two ways to either purchase automated carts. Unfortunately, the grant award does not purchase enough automated carts for our current services. Or we can purchase pre-printed bags, which it would allow us to start the program fully funded through the grant. And then as revenue comes in, it will then trigger itself and we would be fine. So there would be almost no upfront cost for this through the grant process. But we would need guidance to see if you want to adopt moving forward to a printed bag program. Please, next slide. And as always, when we look at services that are very similar to a business model, it's a commodity, we provide a service, there's a cost for that commodity. It's a very simplistic business model. D O R, the Department of Revenue allows us to implement enterprise funding. The board is very familiar that we have two enterprise funds for water and sewer. They are in essence meant to self-sufficiently fund the operation of a user fee type service. We could potentially adopt an enterprise fund for solid waste. Now, what's the benefits to that? It actually takes it off of the general ledger on the general fund. So when you're talking tax rate implication, it actually removes it from the calculation within the tax rate. So as we talk about major projects, Free Middle School, Old Marlboro Road, how are we gonna fund these? We also have to know that there's a ceiling for our tax rate. It's twenty five dollars. We're creeping. So there's methods and procedures where we can start to eliminate or reduce general fund obligations into methods like enterprise fund that allow that allocation to be reused somewhere else or provide a bigger buffer. So it is something that should be explored. I think the task force would be right for this. We can look at this as a whole. Where do we want our financial models? Do we want to still subsidize portions of the solid waste? What's that portion if we do? We can still utilize an enterprise fund even if we subsidize ten percent through general funds. But it is still a method that could have long-term benefits as we move forward with some of our major projects. And I think that is my last slide.
Thank you again, Justin. So I get the full picture here. As we renew this contract that's coming up, presumably, we're not gonna have enough time to have any drastic change within, between now and the time that the contract is due to be renewed six months from now. But we can begin the process and I do like the idea of at least consideration of all of these potential options. And I, I think probably the best way to do it is do some type of a task force that's created that can talk about them and get into depth with them and have discussion and public hearings and public forums and everything else to talk about it, because this is gonna be a big deal. We've learned taking away Christmas tree drop off is a big deal. So trash collection is going to be a much bigger deal than one might think. So it's a big deal. So having said that, six months from now when we renew, I want to make sure I understand what your proposal is. Are you saying that if we move forward with things as is, because we know that we're gonna give ourselves a year before we have to make a big decision as to where we're gonna go in the future, that we would have to increase stickers, basically double them again, or no?
No. So Megan, do you mind bringing the memo up? I'll kind of talk through it. I know it's, I know it's really technical in nature, but I'll kind of hit that point with the memo. So David, if we move forward with signing a contract deal, Harvey, so I requested two types of contracts. Actually, I'm sorry, three types of contracts, all of the scenarios. And one of the contracts was the as is, and there's a method in procurement. The request in front of the board is to move forward with a one-year contract as is with two one-year extensions. Now that allows us to buy time and work, you know, and then come next fiscal year, if we make a recommendation, we can pull ourselves out of the contract and ship again. So what I'm actually requesting the board do today is actually make a motion to approve that contract, which will allow the town of Maynard to buy itself time, allow us to develop a task force and allow us options moving forward with a concise manner. Now, I will tell you, there is cost implications to the current presented F Y twenty three budget you heard Greg Johnson speak of and earlier. Those, those cost implications are roughly seventy five thousand dollars, give or take. And that is to do as is service. Now, we can still move forward with the adoption of the bags under our as is service without a change in that cost, up or down. So because the grant will fund the bags, we can still phase into the bag program come July first on the back of the grant, buying all the bags. And we still didn't increase costs or decrease costs. There is no motion in front of you to increase user fee costs.
Would, would that, moving forward with the bag proposal though, would that commit us in one way or another towards one direction or another in the various options that we have going forward?
So on the slides, there's a reason I said that they can be used in all three scenarios. So no matter what scenario we pick, unless we pick scenario four, but at that time, state grant paid for the bags, we didn't. All three scenarios could utilize bags. So even the automated cart would have excess bags as a process for overflow.
And when you have those bags, just so I understand, does, does a resident have to pay for those bags to get them in a and would that be in addition to the bag that you put in your, in your, in, in your bucket to begin with? How does it work?
No. So you can just put trash in those bags. They're fifteen gallon bags or thirty two gallon bags. So if you have a fifteen gallons, it's typically like a kitchen trash can, thirty two gallons is typically, you know, a larger trash can. You can put little bags into a fifteen gallon bag and close it. So yes, there may be a cost burn if you choose that method, but you don't have to. You could buy a fifteen gallon kitchen trash barrel and you can put that bag in there like you would any other bag and fill it up. Some people like to put multiple bags in those because they have a tendency to try to overstuff. So if you overstuff another bag and then stuff it in there, they're trying to get more bang for their buck. That's not something we can completely control, but there isn't an added cost benefit, cost burden. That would only be burdened by the person that wants to include multiple bags.
So Justin, under scenario one, that would still be, it would be paying per load that's hauled away, correct?
Yeah. So again, so we would be able to control our tipping fees. Now, we would provide card options as stated, fifteen, thirty two gallon and sixty four. So we don't have any anticipated Wheeler Brader cost because we don't know what every resident would choose. But once that automated system's put in place and we know what our, our system looks like, we can start to track analytical data again with our tipping fees and put together a long-term vision and goal. We could incrementally, like we do the enterprise fund, look to address the costs on a yearly basis, not a twenty five year basis. That's what we did before, twenty five years. We can look at this on a yearly basis because it's a tax, well, it's not a tax bill, but it's a quarterly bill that we could potentially address yearly, like we do water and sewer with small incremental increase, ten cents in F Y twenty seven. And if we need to close a bigger gap because Wheeler Brader cost one up, we can continue to kind of keep up with the market.
And what, what is the mechanism by which you know how much individuals are throwing out? Is that, is the bags the way we do that? Or are there, what are the other options within scenario one?
So the mechanism that we would track the tipping fees?
Yeah.
So it's only through invoices. So we would need to collect months, months and years of invoices from Wheeler Brader once the project is implemented.
But alright, so how, how do you know if I'm throwing out trash this week and not throwing it out the next week?
You're charged, you're charged annually or you're charged quarterly.
Okay, so it's a flat fee annually quarterly. Okay, so then that doesn't distinguish between somebody who's throwing out all the time and the elderly couple who is just throwing out one bag every once in a while.
That's correct. Yeah.
And that's why I said that cost burden may be, may be a variable, Jeff. So if someone wants, if someone only produces one fifteen gallon bag a week, that thirty two gallon cart may be something that is an issue. But most of our solid wastes, if you drive around town, which I have a thousand million times, there is a large amount of solid waste because one, we don't, we don't offer a transfer station. Two, there isn't a local transfer station. Maynard has to drive to Hudson to B P and pay. I mean, there's really not an option besides our curbside program for a lot of Maynard residents. So they really put a heavy burden on the curbside.
I guess my, my concern there would be removes or reduces the incentive for recycling if now I separate out because recycling is, is free and I'm minimizing what I'm trying to put in the trash bag. But under that system, if I'm already paying the flat fee and I got, you know, three quarters of a can full, why wouldn't I not just dump my recycling? If, obviously, there are other reasons other than monetary, but doesn't that reduce the incentive for individuals to recycle?
That's why we, one, we are not including a fee for recycling. It will still be provided streamlined recycling. And we're increasing the pickup rate of recycling to once a week. So there's no incentive to throw it in the trash at that point. It's literally free as part of the program and you're literally getting weekly recycled streamlined pickup.
I, I still feel there'd be some portion who would, just the effort to sort the two would mean they would be throwing recycling into the trash and that would increase the amount of trash and therefore the, the flat fee for everybody involved.
Yeah. So Jeff, that was already happening under our user system with the limited cost of the sticker fees. So if you're, it was actually cheaper. I, I witnessed it. I have a thousand pictures. It was cheaper for somebody to just put a box in a bag for two dollars than it was for them to literally take two seconds and cut them and fold them up and put them in there. You know how many of those I responded to? It was, it was addressed in the summary of findings that, you know, because of the cost, we're actually incentivizing people to just throw it out in the solid waste street. That's why you saw that tipping fee drastically changed from F Y twenty down to twenty one. So we control that through the cost of the cart on a yearly process as opposed to waiting ten, fifteen years to address stickers. So as we get data with Wheeler Brader, we can start to see that fluctuation. If we see peaks in tipping and tonnage, we need to potentially up the solid waste and leave recycling free. It's incentivizing to go back to it.
I, I'm still not sure I quite followed that because if I'm, regardless of what the price is, I've already paid its flat fee, right? So now if I'm just lazy, I'm gonna throw it into that extra space in my weekly haul that I'm already getting for the flat fee. As opposed to now, I have to pay by the bag or pay by the sticker rather, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make every effort I can to recycle anything I can and minimize the, the number of bags I'm filling up within my trash can.
That's why we would address the flat fee on a yearly basis. So if you incentivize that flat fee to be higher, then there is no opportunity to throw cardboard in solid waste when you literally have a free ninety six gallon cart that's taken weekly. And your fee is starting to increase because we're seeing violations in situations. E L Harvey has the ability to camera those automated carts and we could start to see recyclables thrown into the streamlined process. But we, again, we need to visualize it over a course of a long period of time. And at that point, we could reduce the cart size. If we find it, we could potentially change the policy again so that we eliminate sixty four gallon carts and only have thirty two. Or we can increase fees to tip those scales back into recycling. Right now, because we only pick up bi-weekly in recycling, people are still throwing recyclables in solid waste bags and stickering them. We literally have people pay fourteen dollars of bulky waste stickers on TV boxes.
Okay, but they're at least now paying for that recycling there. Okay, but they're at least now paying for that recycling there.
Not written, so that sadly, that goes, that doesn't go to a recyclables facility. It gets thrown into the solid waste stream.
But they're, they're paying to put it, they're paying right now to put it in the solid waste stream. They're paying individually, they're paying right now. And if, under the new system, I'm worried they would still do that, but now it's communal, we're all paying for them to throw at the recycling.
Right, so that's why, one, we're, we're eliminating bulky waste through DEP mandates. And two, we're going to up the incentive of weekly recyclable pickup. Which makes it very easy for someone to just throw a bunch of recyclables in a ninety-six gallon cart. Right now, we have a lot of residents that fill that up in one week and then they start to store recyclables because everybody buys Amazon. They start to store them in their, uh, uh, in their garage. And if they can't keep up, sometimes they just go buy a bunch of stickers and throw them in bags.
So is, is this part of the long-term discussion rather than the short-term discussion though? So.
Yeah.
We, we have time, but uh, I, I, I'm leaning towards Jeff's concerns when I hear this, but. But I, 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 I think to, tonight's probably not the right time to have the debate, but I, you know, and I, I might be missing something. But I, I, I tend to lean towards Jeff's side of that argument, but um. You would know better though, Justin, because you've seen it. So I, I don't know. Um, anybody else with a comment?
Oh Dave, do you mind?
Go ahead.
Yeah, typically how most communities deal with what Jeff's talking about is they also offer a transfer station. And the transfer station is usually a very low fee that allows residents to, with excess amount of material to go and drop it off. We don't have that ability. That would be a large capital improvement. You're talking ten, fifteen, twenty million dollars. Um, that we don't have that leverage point. So unfortunately, we have to control it with the automated carts or the bags. And there will always be. Areas where people will abuse a system. This is four thousand six hundred customers. People will abuse a system.
So just for clarification purposes, um, what are you looking uh, from us for tonight? Is it, is it just on a short-term basis while we're trying to figure out and, and discuss what's the long-term plan for this is?
A one-year contract renewal.
Okay.
That where everything remains the same.
Same, got you. And, 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 and then when do we have to, when do we have to have the discussion to come up with, you know?
By this time next year so that we're prepared to, to address the renewal of the contract when it comes up. A, a year and three months from now.
There, there is one added caveat to that. So next select board agenda, there will be the grant award and the contract to move forward with the procurement of the bags. We have to have that implementation plan in place by April first. So that's another conversation. Now, we can pass it by and go in for the grant again in the future. It is a yearly cyclical grant. We can go back at. But we do need to potentially have a conversation. Do we want to purchase the bags even under scenario three as is? Through the grant process.
So how do the bags distributed to their residents?
Sell the same way.
So the bags are manufactured by Waste Zero and they're actually. Um, within their facility. And the facility Waste Zero works with our private vendors like um, Market Basket, wherever we buy all of our stickers now. And they actually, they invoice each other. So Market Basket will buy five hundred cases of fifteen gallon bags, five hundred cases of thirty-two, like they do the stickers now. And they will be on a shelf and main residence would have the ability to go buy cases of bags. At the same exact cost. So if there is five bags, five fifteen gallon bags in a, in a, a box, it would be two dollars a bag. And that would be your cost. So it's a very simplistic changeover. Now again, I'm not forcing this. We just need to understand that we may lose that grant based on that because the April first deadline is here. Unfortunately, there was extreme delays in the proposal. That we received from a number of uh, solid waste vendors. If the board is unaware, solid waste in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and across the country are oligopolies. Yes, the government tries to remove oligopolies, but they still exist. And Y L Harvey has bought, has bought up a number of small vendors and there is typically three to four major players. Um, and they control some of the market. Now DEP with their mandates um, in regards to environmental. Uh, conditioning and removal of landfills and trying to meet regulations from EPA. In Massachusetts have really limited areas for disposal. Which again, drives up the cost. This is a, it, it's uh, scales of economy. So what's happening in Massachusetts is um, a lot of solid waste is being shipped out by rail to Canada, to Maine. To New Hampshire, Vermont, and being buried up there with different regulations, but there's a huge cost to that and we're seeing that. We're seeing a national influx and Massachusetts can't one hundred percent control it. When they create stringent regulations, there is repercussions to those regulations. As you know, we see those all the time.
Um, one thing I would say is um, a concern. Um, for our small businesses, namely like Russell's and the, uh, the corner store and the places that sell stickers. If we're, if we're going to require them to purchase big boxes of. Uh, in order to continue to have the stream of customers coming into those small businesses. And they have to buy big boxes in order to compete with Market Basket because that's the only place that will be able to store them and, and. Put them out on shelves. Some, some of our small businesses that currently rely on foot traffic from sticker sales would hurt. Because those people would no longer go into those stores to purchase anything.
So David, Waste Zero has already addressed this. So they actually house. And store an excessive amount of bags and work with private companies, small stores, big stores. And just like anything else, Coca-Cola, Pepsi, whatever gets delivered to those stores, it's either on a weekly basis based off of sales, two weeks, et cetera. Waste Zero directly brings them to those stores. That is part of the contract. It is, so Market Basket may have the storage capacity to purchase a hundred and ten cases where Russell's doesn't even have the storage capacity.
Well, I'm concerned about location, floor space for them because they're, they're tight.
Waste Zero houses it and they deliver it based on demand. So they keep the shelves stocked like anything else, like all of your other commodity products.
Alright, I think I, I think there's some questions that I have on, go ahead Jeff.
Yeah, so I have one more question. You said, Justin, under scenario one, we would, we could still use the um, bag system. But if there's a flat fee under scenario one quarterly or annually, why are we charging per bag as well?
So we would address that based off of what I, so one, we didn't, we haven't included fees. The projected fees are just a projection on the carts. We would incorporate what our tonnage fee is and the potential of bags. So I would suggest to the board that we stay conservative with our first fleet, uh, excuse me, with our first flat fee. And allow the analytics in the revenue expenditure report to kind of play out. Then look at closing those gaps and then we would have more data to see how much excessive abuse is beyond the cart versus not. And do we even need the bag program at that point? So without. Implementation in advance, we will not have that data.
Is there an option to use the automated carts, no flat fee and put all the price onto the bags?
You would never recoup the revenue. You'd probably pay almost eight hundred thousand dollars a year in expenditures.
But why, but if you're charging for the bags?
No one, so the bags are an excess process. So if, if Jeff only uses a bag three times a year when he has a party. Then you're never going to recoup the revenue. Automated carts are what's going to be the quick and consistent turnaround. The bags are in excess. So Jeff gets a sixty-four ga, or Jeff may get a thirty-two gallon cart. And you have a cookout and you know that that thirty-two gallon cart isn't going to hold all your solid waste. The bags are there for you to throw next to them.
I, I see. I misunderstood what you meant by combining. So the bags are just barely, not barely, they're supplemental to scenario one. The core volume of trash gets thrown away, not without a bag through the flat fee in scenario one.
Correct. Yeah, you wouldn't put the bags in the cart. You can put whatever you want in the cart.
And I, I, I got you.
Yep.
So, so Justin, you need a decision from us in regards to taking advantage of the grant for the, for the purchase of the plastic bags.
Next week's, that's for next week's conversation.
Got it, got it.
Our next meeting's conversation.
Meeting, got it. Next meeting, got it.
Yeah, I didn't want to force that on. I know this is a lot of information. But we really, our highest focus, no matter what, what we have to address is the contract expiration. That's in front of us with the seventy-five dollar, uh, seventy-five thousand dollar implications FY twenty-three. At the end of the day, even if we don't want to go with the bags and we want to put this back on the task force. Yes, we may have missed the small opportunity, but that grant is cyclical and it is something that we can get again going forward. I, I discuss this with DEP all the time. So.
So I see there's a couple of questions. Uh, Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you for recognizing me. Um, just a couple anecdotes, uh. The. Justin mentioned, you know, that trash pickup is an oligopoly. And for my economics, the one thing I know that's worse than oligopoly is a monopoly. And we have been subsidizing E L Harvey and residents aren't really happy with them. Uh, neither am I. Uh, and I've done price comparisons and there are unsubsidized vendors out there that really compete on price. Um, the other fact is that like logistics is a very competitive industry. We've gone in ten years to like Amazon with two-day delivery. Trash pickup is very much the same. There have been, there are innovations every day in dispatch. And I just think like. We want to avoid monopolies and we want to, and we're a small town. We can't really run a plan to, we don't have the scale really to run and plan economy. Granted, Justin is very smart. But I don't think, you know, Justin is trying to compete with these giant mega corporations that have volumes of volumes of data and analytics. And so my feeling is that. We would be best off and we would actually save on cost by having a competitive trash removal market in Mainard. What I wonder though, and I'm certainly sensitive to, to people in the subsidy is why I wonder is, is if we could have a competitive market and a subsidy. So that like we register trash pickup companies and we somehow distribute money, distribute the subsidy to them. Based upon the number of residents who choose them as their vendor.
Kevin, I can answer that. We actually allow that now. We do not, so our service is not a mandatory service. There is a number of residents within the town of Mainard that choose to hire their own service. So that happens right now. And my recommendation, even within the memo, actually looks at that and says, we're not looking to, to remove that rule and regulation from the Board of Health. We want to continue to allow for a competitive market. You are not incorrect. We want to, competition drives down price. So that's why scenario four was the potential of seeing a reallocation of general fund. Now, that is a hot ticket item. I mean, that's a big change in services. That is something that I think would need to strongly be explored by the task force.
But what I wonder, Justin, is do those people who choose to use a vendor outside of E L Harvey, do those vendors receive the subsidy?
Yep. No, they see, so um, we have Mr. Trash Man who we all have, we just bought up. We have Waste Management, we have Republic. There is a number of vendors that come in and.
But they're not subsidized, they're not subsidized by Mainard's.
No.
No, so that, that's Kevin's question. That's Kevin's.
No, no, they're hired independently.
Yeah, so that's why I point out you are, but that subsidy, what we're doing right now is we're picking a winner. Like if we subsidize E L Harvey like one dollar per bag, that's like one dollar less that they have to do than the competition. So the competition has to work harder to compete with E L Harvey because. For by some reason, we chosen E L Harvey as a winner. And because we choose to subsidize only E L Harvey, that breeds complacency and really laziness. Cause they, we've chosen to insulate them somewhat from competition.
Is that it for that point? Okay, Natasha.
Thank you. Um, I actually wasn't commenting necessarily on the content. It was just more understanding the timeline. Um, in, the contract expires the end of June. Is that correct?
June thirtieth of this fiscal year.
Okay.
And we, we need to sign a contract for FY twenty-three. And that allocation, if we move forward with our current service without any changes, results in a seventy-five thousand dollar increase.
Okay, um, and so my, my question is in relation to what Greg had mentioned earlier about. Uh, changes for FY, recommendations for FY twenty-three budget. There have not been some of those things fully discussed yet because they were. Anticipated to happen at next week's budget subcommittee meeting. Um, this I'm guessing was going to be one of those. Potential changes to consider for FY twenty-three, but this, if their vote is taken to, to do that now, we're committing to that change now. Regar, right, in advance of all those other conversations. I just want to get clarity on, on, on that. Cause we, we didn't hear the other aspects that were potentially coming as well with insurance and all the other stuff. So I, I, I guess it might, maybe that's more, more my question to Greg in understanding um. What your, what that would be, what the discussion points would be at our, our meeting next week.
Greg, do you mind if I take just a portion of this? So Natasha, at the end of the day, if the select board don't feel comfortable making the motion to proceed with the contract. The only thing we lose out on is the grant opportunity to shift from stickers to bags. So board in front of, in front of you right now, if you don't approve the motion for the contract, we can wait. But just know that we can't implement the bags. So we would pretty much have our service as is minus bulky waste.
I'm not saying not agree, okay, so maybe, let me rephrase my question. I'm not saying um, not to approve, that I'm wondering if there is an opportunity to have a discussion of all the changes for FY twenty-three. That are, that this is one of them in that meeting next week and then maybe subsequently. So we're not deciding on one, one aspect in the scope of a couple of things, because I think there's an argument to be made of needs, contracts for, for other areas as well. I mean, the outcome could be the same. I just wonder if the, if the need to decide on the contract right now versus after. The subcommittee meets might be a possibility.
So my question would be, um, and this is probably to Greg or, or Justin. Um, bottom line is, uh, if we don't vote this and we don't fund this. Then we're, we won't have trash pickup for FY twenty-three.
It would be a board health. Although, although the vote, the, the vote doesn't have to necessarily take place tonight. And I think that's Natasha's comment.
Right, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with, that it needs to happen. I just, I liked it, like, because there were a couple of things Greg alluded to earlier. That impact FY twenty-three. And so I just was wondering if there would be an opportunity to discuss them as a whole when he's prepared to. Present all of them versus one of these pieces, um, which would be decided tonight. And so with certainty versus kind of having a board discussion, uh, it was just a thought or suggestion. I, I think the idea of. I mean, I'm not arguing with the outcome. We need trash services, but um, I just would like to hear all the, the aspects together and whole. And, and, and maybe have a, a subcommittee discussion on that instead. That was just like my thought.
Justin, we don't lose any opportunity or commit ourselves in a direction by holding off on two weeks on this, is that correct?
So we need to have our implementation plan and contract signed with Mass DEP by April first. So we will have another agenda where we have the conversation, do we want to include uh. Uh, stamped bags in our process, then you can approve the contract as is, even with the stamped bags or the user, or, or the sticker program. We just, the only deadline that's in front of us, there's really two deadlines, but the really hard deadline is. The acceptance of the grant, which has to take place in FY twenty-three. So we can't just sign the grant agreement, then decide not to purchase the bags. DEP will lose their mind. But we have to present that and do that. So. I will tell you, if you feel forced, and this is the, I wish that we had the proposals in advance. Trust me when I said I've been working on this for over a year. And really, really trying to hammer things home. I would suggest if you're feeling pressured to not even talk about the bags. I can get a grant in the future again for bags if the task force chooses to move in that method, if you want some wiggle room. That allows us, or the board, to really consider the contract extension. Up until uh, the adoption of the budget.
But, but Justin, but we can make that decision in two weeks because the deadline is in April first and that's all I'm asking right now.
Yep.
Okay, so there's no, we lose nothing by pushing this motion off two weeks.
Right.
So, but I just want to clarify that we will be making that, just that, the select board will be making that decision in terms of, correct? Okay, alright.
And we can still, we can still decide in two weeks whether or not to do the bags or to push and, and see if we want to get the grant later. So that decision's still open in two weeks.
There is a added caveat to that. So remember the authorities, if you look at the memo, the Board of Health has to adopt the policy change. The select board adopt the financing structure to support that service. So there's multiple motions in my memo. Those are the hurdles that we're trying to, those are the weird deadlines here. Um, we could implement the Board of Health's policy change after the select board approved the contract. Like I said, there's no change. So even if the Board of Health said, we don't want the bags, then nothing changed from this like.
When's the Board of Health scheduled to have this discussion?
I talked to John and he's trying to get me on the next agenda.
Which is?
Um, I'm not sure yet.
Could, and the Board of Health word their motion so that it's dependent upon ours if ours happens afterwards.
They're meeting next week.
So next week.
Put the Board of Health word a motion next week, setting us up to. Could the Board of Health word a motion next week, setting us up to then word it? Does it need to be the select board first and then the Board of Health or can the Board of Health go first?
It should actually be the Board of Health, but the reason I went backwards is because if the Board of Health changed the policy, now they're forcing the select board to make a financial decision. And it would be like a chicken or egg. So really.
Yeah. Well, can't their, can't their motion be subject that they would make a recommendation or something along those lines, subject to the vote of approval from the select board? And that way the authority remains with us. It's just that they've already done what they've had to do.
Yep.
If that's how they choose to approach it. And then we can say, we can say yes or no with their, we knowing that we have their vote already in the pocket. If we needed it.
It may be prudent to have a joint meeting to have this discussion.
That's another way to do it too, but. Yeah, that might be a way to do it too. I just don't want to load up the next meet, the next meeting before we've even started, before we've even ended this one. So. All right. No vote tonight. We will, I'll have things to think about. Continue to read those memo, the memo and the, and the presentation. I'm still not sure where I fall on these bag, on the bag issue. I just don't know. But anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Geez, Department of Public Works. V H B General Engineering Consulting Service Contract Extension.
Yeah, David, this is a pretty basic function that is a yearly allocation of.
In effect, we say we still want Wayne hanging around, right?
And I'll give a little bit of clarity. The board just, there was no motion. It was, this was on the agenda last select board meeting, but there was no. But Becky was looking over the tape and she didn't see, she didn't hear a motion. So just so we can make sure everything's on the up and up, we're just requesting a motion.
All right.
Then I will move. I was going to say, do you want to motion, David?
Yes.
I'll move to accept the terms of agreement for the Department of Public Works on Call Consulting Service Contract Number 1216 between the Town of Maynard and Vanas, Hangon, Brussels. V H B for a one-year extension effective January 1st, 2022, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Okay. Any further quick discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll vote. Armand.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Great. Articles, new control articles for the May 16th town meeting. I think we have three of them in front of us. Control M and P. Control M is the bylaw water resources management. Change. Control N is the authorization of leasing of an ambulance through, leasing of an ambulance through ambulance receipts for the fire department. And control P is the fiscal year 2023 salary administration plan. Are there any changes to the salary administration plan of any substance, Greg?
It increases the minimum wage.
Okay. Any questions on these controls?
You know, do them all as one motion?
Yeah.
If you want, I'm sorry for cutting you off.
Yeah, we can. If we want to go M and unless there's an op, unless there's somebody who thinks they're going to vote no on one of them, let's do them all as one.
All right. Move to accept and approve the following draft controls. M. Amend by law, chapter 31, Water Resource Management. N. Leasing authorization for a new fire truck. And P. Fiscal year 2023 Salary Administration Plan. As shown and forward to the Finance Committee for review and comments.
Second.
Any further comments? We'll vote. Armand.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Green Meadow drafted letter for citizens petition. Green Maynard rather. Drafted letter for citizens petition, climate emergency declaration. I see that there are some members of Green Maynard on. Greg, why don't you tell us what Lisa's office had to say? And.
Okay. So the, so I, first I do have to show my gratitude to Green Maynard for submitting the draft citizen's petition to my office, which I, is always highly recommended. So that we can have, like what I did in this case, I had counsel do a quick review just to make sure it, you know, there's no surprises come town meeting. And so, so they did. And, and I appreciate that. This has come up in some other citizens petitions, which is the distinction of the authority between town meeting and the select board. So in this case, as part of the original draft, which I don't think is even in the version that you're seeing this evening. The citizens petition had basically imposed some requirements onto the select board for some action, but that, that is not within the the ability of town meeting to, to have requirements of the action, you know, under the, if there are things under the authority of the select board, they're under the authority of the select board. If it's under the authority of town meeting, then they're, then they're separate in that regard. So Green Manor was very amenable to that recommendation. No question. So, so what you're seeing this evening is the up to date in reflection of my feedback. So I appreciate that.
Yep. Any questions about this from, from the board now? There has not yet been a citizens petition like signature drive yet, correct?
That's going on now.
It's going on now. Okay. Because as just for purposes of just edification is that a citizens petition cannot be rejected when it's submitted legally and lawfully by citizens. It cannot be rejected by the select board. So there is really no role for a citizens petition at this stage for the select board at all. It's not been presented to us. It's not been, you know, it's not in front of us as a, as a as an article. And so I wanted to make that point clear that at this point, there's nothing before the board. Is your, is your intent, Orion, for to get the boards to endorse the citizens petition? Or is it just to get the board to the understanding that the board would accept the citizens petition? Because as I just said, we would accept it by requirement under our, under our charter. And an endorsement is different than the acceptance. And typically the board traditionally does not endorse citizens petitions, because if we were endorsing a petition or a warrant article, we would present that article ourselves or present it forward. So I guess that's the, the conversation that I think at least I should hear from you or the board should hear from you. And then if any questions from the board, feel free.
Okay. Well, Laura is making a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, Orion.
No, that's fine.
Laura, same question.
No, I mean, I don't feel like I need to do a presentation. You've all read it. And we were hoping for some kind of approval from the select board. I think just with the success of the past bylaws from last year, Orion had such a positive relationship with the select board and with Greg. We just wanted to follow in the footsteps of those bylaws with this declaration and really just put it out there and you know, if, if we're not able to get your approval, at least we can say we met with you and you know, you legally are, I don't know how to phrase it, allowing it to proceed, I guess, because of legal reasons.
We don't have, we, we wouldn't have a choice either way. If it's presented legally with the appropriate numbers of signatures. The, the charter says that the select board shall accept for the, for a town meeting or a special town meeting, depending on the numbers of, of signatures required. So there's no real authority on the board to reject it. So it's accepted traditionally. And that's, that's my point is that typically a petition, an article is presented by the board. And if it's presented by the citizens, the board doesn't take a position on it. If it's a citizens petition. That's, that's been the tradition. Doesn't mean it can't be changed, but that's been the tradition.
Well, I think, I think we're coming before you to make it clear that this is a petition in support of what we hope will be happening in this town meeting, what turns out to be this incredibly urgent climate crisis. And we would love to have your support individually, if not as a group. We want you to know that we are trying to gather the citizens of the town in support of doing something significant.
Any questions from the board or comments from the board?
I, I asked this question at the last meeting when Jeff brought up the fact that, that Green Maynard wanted to come. And I'm just curious, I know that there's a crossover of a fair amount of you that are on Green Maynard and also on the Sustainability Committee. So I'm actually wondering why the Sustainability Committee isn't interested in taking this on and presenting it either at a special time meeting in October that we typically have or the following year.
And I'll just for context of the Sustainability Committee meeting last week, they did discuss this document. They ended up endorsing it by a full vote, but there were some comments saying it would have been nice to, to have the opportunity to, to add and contribute. So they approved the document as is, but did note for some members that there were, you know, possible additions or alterations that they, they would have taken a look at had they been given six months or whatever the time is till the next deadline is for the fall town meeting.
And I, I, go, go ahead. Sorry.
I was just going to also just point out, I guess it's a timing thing for us as well. The Sustainability Committee was just reformed and just as I understand, I'm not on it, but had their first meeting and Green Maynard's been in formation for a couple of years and kind of has the momentum right now. And just this particular issue to, to wait doesn't feel like the right thing, just because of the urgency of what's happening with the climate. I mean, at least for me personally, that's sort of how I'm coming at it. Waiting till October, waiting till next year would be hard for the members of our group just to accept that.
Okay. And the other question I have regarding on the question we asked the select board to charge a Sustainability Committee with producing a climate action plan. Now, is that something that you anticipate? Cause I saw an email that said that there's, that, you know, that the things have been changed. So there's no cost associated. But are you, who, how do you anticipate that Sustainability Committee is going to work to produce the climate action plan? And what kind of support are they going to need to do that?
Well, a lot of what is in this document is actually mirrors what's in the Sustainability Committee mission statement. So I think we are on the, on the same page in terms of the directions. We think that the town has to go in order to begin meeting these, this issue, which is overwhelming. And by saying that we would like climate action plan with annual reports to the town at the time of town meeting, we're trying to keep things moving ahead.
Just, Justine, just to address your, your issue, we were, we actually put forward, Greg got a copy of a second bylaw that we had to request a sustainability director position, which would be a funded position. And would have been able to help with putting together the climate action plan. But the feeling was that, well, part of it was that we were late in the budget process and that that might mean that this, the, the climate action plan would be harmed by having that second bylaw or bylaws, the long-term declaration or whatever it is in there. So we dropped it, but we're very keen to want to see a sustainability director position funded at some point because surrounding communities have done this. To Laura's point, the urgency, we really see the urgency. And so this is one of the things that well, personally, I would like to understand how we do the, the process to find the money for, for that kind of position.
And before I forget, thank you, Mr. Stillwater. Before I forget, I have been remiss. Can Orion, Laura and Roger all just give your addresses so when Becky goes to do the minutes, I'm not scolded for not having gotten addresses for the minutes.
All right. I meant for A Martin Street.
Laura.
Six A Upper Beacon Street.
Okay. And Roger.
17 Sunset Road.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry about that. So your, your question, or was that a question or more of a statement, Mr. Stillwater, relative to the you know, sustainability manager or director or whatever it might be called?
Yeah. So we're not trying to do that right now. We're just trying to get the climate change thing through, but I would be interested in hearing from the board about how, I mean, one of the, one of the reasons that it didn't get approved was the whole issue of finances and coming in late on the, on the budget, feeling like, you know, the, the financial committee couldn't support it and that, you know, there were problems doing it right now. But we are keen to, to see that the sustainability director position funded and how do we work to put that forward in a way that's going to be acceptable in the, in the, in the future, maybe in the fall town.
My, my own perspective is that anything relative to hiring of employees becomes a problem when you have, we have the same budgetary conversations all the time. So then I would then move on to the question and not dismissing the importance of, of the, the issue and on the global stage and, you know, the, on the bigger picture. Is, is there a regional effort that can be done relative to a sustainability direct directors for various communities? Is there a way to utilize other communities in any fashion that can help us so that we can work together as a region versus an individual community? And then is Maynard large enough to have, to sustain a sustainability director? When we have a fleet that's pretty small of vehicles, we have a group of buildings that's pretty small overall from a municipal side. Yes, we have potential bylaws that we could add relative to, you know, ways to control climate and ways to control fossil fuels, et cetera. But is Maynard big enough to have that type of a director in our structure when we are really tight with the budget? So I.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I, what I wanted to say is we're hoping with this declaration that we get the town on board with the selectmen, with the Sustainability Committee to, to begin actively to find solutions so that we are not contributing to the pollution that is going to kill us all if we aren't careful. Where we have done already a greenhouse gas inventory and we are looking at what the situation is. So we could have gone a lot of different ways. Other towns have set up task forces and we decided we had this new sustainability committee. Let's go with them and leave to them. Decided we had this new sustainability committee, let's go with them and leave to them. The decisions about where to go and how to reach out to the different communities. Um, and, and how to structure something so that as a town. We get better at being careful about how we treat the environment. And I think we have a committee. That is begun, that is going to do just that. And our petition is to say we want the whole town to get behind them. And behind you.
And Orion, I, I imagine if, if left to their own devices, independent of this, this declaration, the Sustainability Committee would be working on, on many of these anyway, but. Then the real goal of this is to show a, a broad public support for that mission um by, by having it at a town meeting vote. Would you say that's accurate?
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, um, so. As I said last year with your uh widely successful uh efforts. To all of you that are involved, good luck in gathering, I think this year it's a hundred versus a, you know, it's much fewer, six, ten versus a hundred signatures or something. So it's virtually a, you know, a, a given. Um, probably have signatures already arranged, so um. So good luck with it and, you know, present it to the board for its approval and then presentation at town meeting.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
I'm on such a long night.
Yes, yes.
We've had, we've had longer, unfortunately, but uh.
I'm proud to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, um, next up is the chair report, um, quickly. Um, first item is. Um, EverSource came and worked at the bottom of Lowe's Hill to try to fix the issue that was down there and. It's recurring. Um, the water remains and I've gotten a lot of comments from neighbors. That they're concerned that if that was the intended fix, I've been asked, are they coming back to fix, fix? Um, it's still leaking and it's not, I, I, the description I was given is it's not bubbling up like it used to when it rains heavily or whatever, but it's still leaking out onto the street. Uh, so Greg, can you give a call to EverSource?
Yeah, we'll follow up. I mean, I was, I was grateful that they, at least we get them. They, they know it's an issue, obviously, and they.
Yeah.
Keep coming back out. I'm, I'm, now I'm really worried about the scale of the problem, but we'll uh, uh, yeah, we'll look into it further.
Uh, yeah, I don't know what the. What the overall thing, uh, something's going on with underground. I don't know what it is.
Right.
But. Uh, and then secondly, Greg mentioned earlier, um, Friday's event with Kate Hogan down at the DPW barn. Um, luckily, um, I get to go pick up my daughter for spring break that day, so I have the day off, so I'm able to go uh in the morning to uh. To be there. So I hope that if, if nobody else can be there, I will be there and um. You know, it's good, I guess the Congresswoman's gonna be there, which is nice. Might be the last event, the Congresswoman is here on an official. Uh, on an official event, so um. You know, we will have a new Congresswoman shortly, new district, I should say. Uh, so anyway, that's it for me. Um, so hopefully everybody's able to make it and if uh, if not, uh, I'm sure it will be a good event. Uh, there will be food, which was nice to see. Uh, alright, uh, board members reports, Armand.
Um, I don't have anything to uh add tonight.
Justine.
Uh, no, I'm good for tonight.
Jeff.
Uh, just a couple of things. So as I mentioned earlier, the Sustainability Committee met and did their formation meeting, so that uh was success and they, they did nominate a chair and I, we will have a co-chair for her as well, so they're, they're.
Who is the chair, Jeff?
Um, Priscilla Ryder was nominated and then approved as the chair. Um, in the same vein, um, the uh N C four, that's the North Central Climate Change Collaboration, they're continuing to meet, they have a draft memorandum for us at some point. It is um, uh, designed to make sure that, that the actions they take are, are really non-binding, so um, that, that should meet all the normal kind of expectations. Um, but just a, a show of uh support and, and active participation, not unlike the um. Uh, the Sudbury, Assavet, Concord River one um from, uh, I believe that was our last meeting. Uh, and then um, while preparing uh some uh content on what we were currently doing for the Sustainability Committee meeting, I had attended um. One of the master plan implementation committee meetings, but I reached out to Jason for some information just on the climate change specific goals and um. He was able to come back to me real quickly, do the reporting, and I can imagine if I were to ask for any other set of goals, what the progress are on, they're, they're very well organized in terms of the responses, they're getting back on those. So it's just a really nice resource uh for really everybody to have just on, here is this kind of. You know, specific subset of goals, where are we on each of them, real quick feedback on that, um, and nice and organized. So it's a great resource to have. Uh, let's see, what else I got? Oh, the Charter Review Committee uh meeting, I attended that as well. Um, they've updated the um. The desire for an increased size for the Board of Health, so that'll be among the um recommendations of changes uh that we will see eventually. Uh, and then I just want to thank the Planning Board for hosting us the other uh night for their presentation on the Powder Mill corridor as well, which um. Uh, I thought was um, looking forward to that, so. That's all for me.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, just, go ahead, Justine.
Sorry, sorry, Chris. I just, I just thought of something, um, and this, forgive me, but I know that I have a, we have a meeting next week, next Tuesday, I believe. And I was just curious what it is again.
Uh, it's the uh, I don't want to steal Megan's thunder.
Oh, it's the, it's the hearing for the outdoor dining for the four restaurants.
Yeah, should be, should be.
It'll be short.
Yeah, no, thank you.
There's, there's also a leadership meeting, Greg, next, that same night at six, at uh five thirty.
But they don't, they don't care about that.
No, but before, I should have, well, I should have announced it. I forgot. Thank you for reminding me.
What time is the quick meeting?
I think it's right after six thirty.
Seven or six thirty.
Six thirty.
This is gonna be a quick meeting.
Yeah.
We should have started at six thirty.
Oh, yeah. I think it's six thirty for uh.
Right, that's what we're going with, unless anyone's.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tuesday, the eighth.
Yeah.
Oh, I got it, I bet, very good. Got the wrong week.
Yeah, six thirty, confirm.
Okay.
It's just a hearing, so it's um, you had to say the time, so yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very quick. Uh, Chris, you got anything?
I'm good, thanks.
Alright, great. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, everybody. Great night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Take care.
Everybody.